Good evening, staff, residents, and all planning commissioners and residents from home. The regular meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order for March 9th, 2021. And so on March 4th, 2020, government news and proclaim a state of emergency. And I'm just going to summarize this, so we're just going to go through it. Basically, if you're sick, or if you have a cold, fever, any COVID symptoms, please stay home. And you can call in for the Zoom meeting. We at a certain times, and you can join us that way, or you can watch us through YouTube. And so you could participate it this way, or you could email to us. So just remember that. I'm just going to summarize this whole thing. Then I'm going to go to public comments addressing the commissioner. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on any matter listed on the agenda, or on any other matter within their jurisdiction is asked to complete a speaker card that's provided on the speaker podium and submitted the card to a planning department staff. So the card looked like this. Please identify on the speaker card whether you are speaking on an agenda item or non-agenda item. Request to speak on non-agenda items will be heard during oral communications before the public hearing section of the agenda. Oral communications are limited to 30 minutes. Generally, comments is a limit to five minutes per speaker unless further time is granted by the chairperson. The chairperson may also add his or her discretion further limit the time of each speaker in accordance to accommodate a large number of speakers in or to ensure that the business of the Planning Commission is effectively conducted. Any testimonial comments regarding a matter set for a public hearing will be heard during the public hearing for that item. And we're right now, we will now take a moment for silent prayer or meditations followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me. Please join me with Pledge of Allegiance, and our Commissioner Nick Lewis will lead us. Thank you.
Please face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lena, can you please do a roll call?
Yes, good evening. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Present.
Vice Chair Becerra? And Chair Heng?
Here.
Thank you. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes of February 20th? Last meeting, 2021?
No changes.
No changes? Okay, hearing none. The meetings of February 23rd, 2021 are approved and submitted. Wait, last meeting was? Roll call, please? Or do we need to? No, no, we don't need roll calls. So we just approved that? Okay, oral communications. Do I have cards for any oral communications? Anyone wants to come up for oral communications? Seeing none. Do we have the Zoom meeting for oral communication as well? No?
Let me check.
It's all for the item.
It's all for the item.
So, okay, thank you. As we're moving on to public hearing meetings. And let me see. For position, Plan Number 20-01, tentative track map 8313420-01, general plan amendment number 20-01, tree removal permit number 20-14, mitigation negative decorations on environmental impact. And the applicant is Glenn Crosby for Lewis Home. Location is 1651 East Roland Avenue. And the applicant is requesting the project consists of a request for the approval of a precise plan and tentative track map to demolish all existing school buildings used on the site and construct 158 residential condominium units, 66 two-story, single-family residential-style detached units ranging from 1,471 square foot to 1,798 square foot, and 92 attached three-story townhome-style units ranging from 1,310 square foot to 1,721 square foot. Internal drive aisles, common open space, guest parking space, and other associated incidental improvement on a 9.14 acre site. A tree removal permit is required to remove nine significant trees on the site, five oak trees, two maple trees, and two bottlebrush trees. The project also involves a request for a general plan amendments to change the general plan, land use destinations from civic schools to neighborhood medium, and a zone change to change the zoning from single-family residential or one to a Pacific plan. And Brené will be... Is that Brené?
Joanne will be giving the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the public. I'll go ahead and start off the presentation by going over each of the entitlements that's under consideration tonight.
Excuse me, Joanne, can you be a little bit louder? We clearly hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and start off the presentation by going over each of the entitlements that are being considered tonight. The precise, a precise plan application is required to allow for the development of the site. The tentative track map is to allow for the condominium subdivision of airspace rights. The zone change is required to change the zoning designation from the current single-family residential zoning designation to a specific plan. So the specific plan in itself, which is the document that was provided both online and given to the Planning Commission, is going to be serving as, if approved, is going to be serving as the zoning or tool that is going to be used for the site. The general plan amendment is required to change the land use designation from civic schools to neighborhood medium to allow up to 20 residential units per acre. I just wanted to point out that the general, a general plan amendment would be required for any development on the site unless that development is a school. So even if, let's say, the site is going to be developed into a single-family residential, single-family residential development, a general plan amendment would still be required. But in this case, the application is to allow for up to 20 units per acre. A tree removal permit is to allow the removal of nine significant trees. On the side is the aerial. The project site is located on the former Pioneer School Site, which is located on the north side of Roland Avenue, approximately 300 feet west of its intersection with Azusa Avenue. The site is surrounded by a single-family residential to the west, to the north, and to the south. And it also, it also has commercial developments to the north, commercial development to the east, and south as well. The project would serve as a bridge to bridge the neighboring residential use, or the neighboring commercial use to the neighboring residential use. Here's the basic project overview. The site is a 900, I'm sorry, a 9.14 acre site. The proposed development is for 158 residential units, which would comprise of 66 two-story, single-family-style residences. And the single-family-style home, two-story, single-family-style homes are located, have been situated adjacent to the residential, the adjacent single-family residential development along the north and also along the west. And towards the midsection of the lot, right along here. The, there are 92 attached three-story townhomes also proposed, where the five-plex, the five-plex aisles are along the commercial, near the, adjacent to the commercial development right along here, where the, where my pointer is pointing at. And also, the six-plex is situated or sited mid, on the mid portion of the lot. The site is accessible from two driveways on Roland Avenue. The 1,000, what, 10,450 square foot common open space area right along here is directly accessible from the west driveway. Each of these driveways lead to private lanes that would provide access to the homes on the site, parking spaces, and also the private, the common open space area. There are a total of 99 parking spaces that are being proposed in addition to the two-car garage, the parking spaces within the two-car garages for each residential unit. Here is the conceptual landscape plan. A combination of tree shrubs and ground cover will be installed on site, including more than 100 trees ranging from 24-inch box size through 30-inch, 30-inch box size. There is a recommended condition that 10 tree, 10 oak trees be required to be planted on site to replace the five oak trees that would be removed as part of the project. So there is going to be a landscape buffer that's going to be installed along the front, along the side, and the rear along the north end of the property. The applicant is also proposing that 10-foot block walls be...
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
10-foot block walls are going to be installed.
I'm sorry, can you speak in the mic? Sorry. We can hardly hear you.
The cul-de-sac on Eileen Street will not, will be kept in place and will not be directly or accessible from the residence, the future residences, if approved, of the development. There would be a gate that would be installed on the Eileen Avenue, Eileen Street cul-de-sac for the use of emergency vehicles only. Here are photographs of the abutting neighbors along the rear, the side and rear. The top photograph is of the neighboring residential property on the west. And in this, this portion right along here is, I believe, Pioneer Drive. And the middle photograph is along the rear. And this road, like, right along here is Eileen Street. The bottom photographs show the commercial property at the rear of the site, adjacent commercial property at the rear of the site, and also the adjacent commercial property to the east of the site. So here are renderings of the proposed development as it would be visible from, from the Roland Avenue frontage. So it's, it's going to be, it's in section from, from east, from west to east. So adjacent to the single-family residential would be the properties along the top rendering. And this would be the entry to the site. And the bottom photograph is the six-plex and the five-plex. This is adjacent to the commercial properties to the east with driveway access. And this, this rendering shows that, it makes it kind of look like the, the five, five, or the six-plex is, is closer to the street than it is. It's actually approximately 40 feet back because there, there is proposed parking right in front of it on site. Here is the, a proposed rendering of Plan One for the single, for the single-family, two-story, single-family residential. They, there are three proposed designs: Spanish Colonial Cottage Farmhouse. The Spanish Colonial Architectural Style units will utilize gable roof with, with concrete S-stiles, stucco, sand-finished walls, recessed windows with trim, decorative tiles, wood window shutters, metal railings, and a decorative roll-up garage door. The cottage-style architecture will utilize both a gable and hip roof with composite shingle roof material, stucco and sand-finished walls with stone veneer, vinyl windows with trim, wood window shutters, and again, a decorative roll-up garage door. For the farmhouse style, it'll utilize a gable roof with composite roof shingles, stucco and finished walls with board and battened vertical siding, vinyl window with trim, metal railing, and a decorative garage door. For the Spanish Colonial-style home, the proposed height would be 25 feet 8 inches max from, from grade to the, to the highest point. For the cottage, it would be 27 feet 6 inches from grade to highest point. And the farmhouse is again, 27.6 as well. Here are the proposed floor plan for Plan One. Plan One is 1,461 square feet. There's three bedrooms and two bathrooms, two and a half baths. Each unit has a two-car garage and 183 square foot private open space. Here are the renderings for Plan Two. And Plan Two has to, is comprised of two different type of architectural-style farmhouse and Spanish Colonial. The height proposed for, for Plan Two is 25 feet from grade to the highest point. And this is the proposed floor plan for Plan Two. 1,663 square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half baths as well, a two-car garage. And Plan Two has, has a larger private outdoor area at 1,603 square feet. Here is the rendering for Plan Three. Plan Three is farmhouse, Spanish Colonial. It's the same, the height for the, for Plan Three is the same as the proposed for, I believe, Plan One. And the materials used are, for the farmhouse in Spanishella are also the same. Plan Three has 1,798 square feet, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, two-car garage, and 212 square feet of private outdoor area.
All right.
...
Sorry. I'd like to point out that most of the, going back to the site plan, most of, most of the properties directly adjacent to the single-family residential homes are the Plan Two style, or the, the Plan Twos. So these are the Plan Twos, and they, the rear of them, the rear of these Plan Two units face the single-family residential properties along the west and the north. And they're, and the windows for these units are clear story and are higher, are higher up so that it lets light in, but it does not allow people to look out. However, there is a concern that these two units, which, which are Plan Two units, it has bedroom windows that face into this property, property, two properties right along here is backyard. So staff would just like to point that out. I spoke to the applicant about it, and he is willing to address staff's concern regarding the, the windows and, and potential privacy impacts to these two neighbors. So moving on to the three-story townhome-style units. The proposed architectural style for the, the three, the three units are either going to be a five-plex with five units per building, or a six-plex with six units per building. Each of these designs, or the five-plex or six-plex, are either going to be farmhouse, architectural style, or Spanish Colonial architectural style. The materials used for these units are similar to what is used for the same architectural style for the single-family residential-style homes. Here is the first floor plan for, for the five-plex. I'm only going to show the floor plans for the five-plex because the five-plex and the six-plex's floor plan is similar. The only difference is that for the six-plex, there are four planned ones instead of three planned ones for the five-plexes. So they're, they're all, all units, all individual units in comparison from, to the five, to the six-plex are the same size. So for, for Plan One, for the three-story multifamily units, Plan One is 1,310 square feet. Plan Two is 1,495 square feet. And Plan Three is 1,721 square feet. The difference between the plans are, Plan, Plan Two has, has a den right in the bottom, right along here, that can also be used as an office. And it has a powder room right along here. Plan Three has a bedroom on the bottom floor with its own bathroom and closet space. They, each, each of the units have a two-car garage with steps leading up to the second floor. For the second floor, Plan One and Two have decks. And Three, and Three, the Plan Three units do not. And they all have a kitchen, dining area, and living area, and also a powder room. And here's a floor, the, the floor plan for the third story or third floor. And yeah, on the third, on the third floor, they all have two bedrooms, one being a master bedroom and a bathroom. So this is a portion of the tree inventory. The, the significant trees are the two maple trees right around here, which corresponds to this photograph. This tree is actually this tree right here. So it's not, it's not, it's not considered significant because it is not located in the front. This tree is, the, these trees are the two bottlebrush trees, which are photographed right along here at the bottom. And these three oak trees are the oak trees right along here. From, I guess, from right, from left to right. This corresponds with this tree, this with that, and also the ends correspond with each other. And then the, these trees are located on the inner quad of the school. This particular tree is, is this tree on the tree inventory. And the, this is this oak tree right along here. So the five oak trees are considered significant because of their species. And again, the, the removal of the five oak trees would yield the requirement of replacing those trees with, with 10 trees. And it add up, um, two-to-one ratio. The minimum box size for, for the 10 replacement trees are 36-inch box on the site. As far as the additional requirements for the project is concerned, we are going to, the project is going to require an arts, to contribute to the Arts in Public Places program. The applicant would have the option of contributing its own public art equalling to a half percentage of the construction valuation or paying that as the in-lug fee. The, the applicant would also have to pay the development impact fee equalling to $226,542. That's an approximate, that's an approximate for this, for this fiscal year. It may, that amount may change next fiscal year, starting in, in July. The, the park fee, the applicant is not proposing to, to construct a park on the site, a public park. The park dedication in-lug fee would equal to approximately 1 million... The park dedication in-lu fee would equal to approximately one, one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. As far as community benefit contribution is concerned, the applicant, the applicant will be required to, to initiate a down, down payment assistance program for a minimum of fifteen homes, equalling one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And I'll go over the, the community benefit, or this down payment assistance program in, in, in another slide. So the city does have RIN numbers for the year 2021 to 2026. And we would be required to provide areas for five thousand three hundred forty-six units. The downtown, the down payment assistance program that I mentioned earlier would provide a down payment assistance for home ownership to, to public sector employees, such as teachers and police officers and firefighters. The, the site is a vacant building. And we consulted with our police department and they informed us that they received a total of one hundred sixty-two calls for the site, which included homeless and homeless transient and suspicious people and trespassers on the site. With that, they've made a total of ten arrests on the site. As far as community outreach is concerned, the, the applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting. It's, the neighborhood meeting that the applicant conducted is not the traditional neighborhood meeting where, where a set time and date is provided and anybody can attend the meeting at that set time and date. Due to COVID, the COVID pandemic, the neighborhood meeting was appointment-based. However, they were, they spoke to anybody that, that walked to the meeting area with questions, whether or not they had an appointment. The, the neighborhood meeting notice was sent out to all property owners and occupants within three hundred feet from the site. In addition to that, the applicant also approached or is working with, with the neighbors in an individual basis. Public, as far as public, the public hearing notice is concerned, the public hearing notice was sent out to all property owners and occupants within three hundred feet from the site. There were fifty-nine of them. And it was sent out on February eleventh. It was, we mailed it out on February eleventh, 2021. It was also published in the newspaper on February eleventh, 2021, which is more than the required amount of time that is required by state law. In addition to that, the city also published the public hearing notice on the city's website. And also on the, the applicant posted the hearing notice on the site thirty days prior to today's meeting. The project is considered a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. The notice of intent and notice of availability, availability was circulated in the, in the public comment, with the public comment dates from, from November nineteen, 2020 to December twenty-first, 2020. Comments were received, received from the Department of Transportation, sorry for the error in spelling, in Los Angeles County Sanitation District. Seven comments were, I believe it was eight comments, were received from concerned individuals. Comments were prepared for, for letters received during the public comment period. In addition, comments were also prepared for letters received by February twenty-fourth, 2021. And these comments and letters were posted on the city's website and also provided in the planning commission packet. In addition to the public comments or letters received in relation to the public hearing notice, we also received additional letters after February twenty-fourth, 2021. These letters or emails have been forwarded to the planning commission and have been printed out and provided, in, in, and copies of it are provided to the planning commission for today's meeting. The environmental document was prepared by the city's consultant, environmental consultant, which is SOMAS. Aliyah Hookoki from, from SOMAS is, is available to do the presentation pertaining to the CEQA document.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Aliyah Hookoki. I'm a senior environmental project manager with SOMAS. As the environmental consultants on this project, we have been tasked for preparing the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA document for the project. CEQA should state that CEQA applies to all discretionary actions. And the purpose of preparing a CEQA document is to disclose to the decision-makers and the public the potential environmental impacts of a project. And if significant impacts are identified, CEQA requires that feasible mitigation measures are identified and proposed to reduce the significant impacts to less-than-significant levels. For this project, City of West Covina is the lead agency. Okay. The environmental issues to be analyzed per CEQA guidelines include the twenty topics that you see on this slide. I should mention that per the updates to CEQA guidelines, the energy and wildfire are the latest additions to the topics. And for the proposed project environmental document, we have analyzed all the twenty topics. Now, one point that I have to make is that when we review a document or when we prepare the environmental impacts of a project, if we determine that the project would result in significant impacts that can be mitigated, then an envi, I'm sorry, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration would be the appropriate document for the project. And in this case, we determined that although there are a number of significant impacts identified, but we were able to introduce mitigation measures that would reduce the impacts. So that's why an initial study mitigated net deck is the appropriate CEQA document for the project. Through the preparation of the initial study and mitigated net deck and the analysis that we conducted for each of the topics, we determined that the project would result in either no impact or less than the, less-than-significant impact to the topics that are listed on this slide. I should note that, of course, there are, regardless of the level of impact, there are regulatory requirements, or RRs, that the project will comply with. And that compliance is regardless of the level of impact of the project. Now, one important point that I would like to, um, oh, I'm so sorry. Joanne? This version does not include them. So I wanted to note that while the topic of transportation evaluated the potential impacts of the project in terms of the vehicle, vehicle or miles traveled, or VMT, which is a recent requirement that took effect on July first of last year, the project was deemed exempt from the requirements of VMT. And as a result, a VMT analysis was not prepared. And also that is the map that basically, the plan that shows that the project is exempt from preparation of the VMT analysis. The rationale being that the project is located where, within a TPA zone, transit priority area, and as such, the city deemed the project to be exempt. Okay. Now, this is a different presentation. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you. Based on the analysis, we also determined that the project would result in potentially significant impacts related to topics that are listed on this slide and the next two slides. Per CEQA, if a project results in a significant impact, we need to identify feasible mitigation measures to reduce the impact to less-than-significant level. I basically tried to just summarize the mitigation measures that we proposed for the topics of biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, and tribal cultural resources. In case of biological resources, given that there are ornamental trees on this site that could, or may include nests, if the nests are impacted by construction activities, that could result in a potentially significant impact. We know also that the federal Migratory Bird Treaties Act, MBTA, and several sections of the California Fish and Game Code provide protection for the special status migratory birds and their nests and eggs. And actually for common as well as special status migratory birds. So the mitigation that we propose basically required that breeding and construction activities occur outside of the nesting and breeding season, which is typically starting in March and ending by mid-August. If demolition or site preparation activities start during this particular season, then the mitigation requires a pre-construction survey to make sure that if there are nests within the impact area, that there's a fence created around the impact area. And the biologist actually serves as a, as a monitor to make sure that during construction activities, no impacts would occur to the nesting birds. In terms of cultural resources, although we determined based on the record searches that were conducted by our specialist, cultural resources specialist, the searches did not result in any determination of potential resources within the area. Nevertheless, we proposed a mitigation that basically said that during earth-moving activities during construction, we will, we will include our qualified archaeologists to monitor the activities. And the monitor will set or establish procedures if they come across any potential resources. We also identified potential impacts with geology and soils. And basically, the mitigation that we introduced was to comply with the recommendations in the geotechnical report. Additionally, within the geology and soil section, we have the topic of paleontological resources. We introduced a mitigation measure that if grading activities encounter any paleontological resources that were unknown, ground-discovering activities will stop and the qualified paleontologist will examine the materials and recommend courses of action. In our analysis of the noise impacts, we also determined a potential impact with construction noise to the existing residential uses to the north and west of the site. The mitigation measure calls for a noise barrier and of twelve-foot height. And that noise barrier will be implemented or installed along the northern and western boundaries of the site that are adjacent to the existing residential uses. In addition, we proposed a mitigation measure to reduce construction equipment vibration impacts. And this particular mitigation measure talks about the distance of the construction equipment from existing residential uses. So last but not least, there's the issue- So, last but not least, there's the issue of tribal cultural resources. We consulted with the Native American tribes. And although based on our record searches, we didn't, did not identify any particular issues. However, based on our consultation, we came up in agreement with the Native American tribe and the city. We proposed a mitigation measure that requires a Native American monitor during grading activities within the first five feet of the native soil to ensure that the project does not impact any unknown resources that may exist. So, that completes my presentation. And I'll leave you next. Thank you.
You will turn it over to the developer.
Well, hold on, I'm holding. Okay, I just wanted to go over the recommendation. Staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt resolutions, recommending that the city council approve the, the project, including the mitigated negative declaration. Again, just to, just to clarify, the planning commission's action would be a recommendation to the city council to, to, to approve the project. That is what staff is recommending. The commission does not have the purview to approve the project without, without it going to the council. So, this is the first step, or first public hearing. And if the, the planning commission takes action tonight, depending on the action, it will still be required to go to the city council. In the resolutions, there are conditions of approval. However, those resolutions are, are recommend, are, are the, those conditions of approval are a recommendation to the city council. With that, this concludes staff's presentation. If the planning commission has any questions for, for, for me, or also, and also the city's consultants, we are available to answer. We also have Jana, Jana Robbins, which is the city's traffic engineer on the Zoom call. And also Michael Eckerman, which is the city's, the city engineer on the Zoom call as well. If you have any questions for them, they are also available to answer.
Okay, thank, thank you, Joanne, for the report. And thank you for our SEQA consultants to help us with the reports. Now, does any of our commissioners has any questions for our staff or our consultants? Before I open up to public hearings, do we have any questions for staff and our consultants? Go ahead.
I had a couple of questions on the, on the EIR. With, with regard to the, the presentation, I counted only 15 of the 20 elements that had no significant or, or no impact. I, I was, I, I only saw two in your presentation that you, that you discussed as, as being matters that, that had major impacts that, that needed to be mitigated outside, actually, excuse me. I, I counted three, including noise was, was one you discussed, but I didn't see up on the screen. I, I, I didn't, I didn't hear the other two.
Okay, I'm sorry if I was not clear on that. The five topics that may potentially result in significant impacts are biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, and tribal cultural resources.
Can, can, can you go through the, the tribal and cultural and, excuse me, what was, what was the other, what was the last?
Noise, tribal was the last one.
Oh, the, the geological.
Um, the cultural resources and tribal cultural resources. We conducted record searches for both topics. And the searches usually do a radius of half an, half a mile from the site. Nothing was identified in terms of potentially sensitive resources. However, in terms of archaeological resources, under the topic of cultural resources, just to make sure we avoid any potential impacts that have been unknown, we propose a mitigation measure where we hire a monitor, an archaeological monitor, to make sure that if there are finds, that they're there to evaluate that particular find. And same with tribal cultural resources. And in this case, the, the monitor is basically a Native American monitor. And that came about as a result of the Native American consultation that was done. In terms of geology and soils, the mitigation that we proposed basically required compliance with all the recommendations in the geotechnical study. And there are a number of future issues such as the design, the, um, earthwork activities. So, and they have made recommendations for each one of those issues and topics. So, our mitigation is to comply with those measures, even though the rep, the report did conclude that the project is feasible from a geotechnical standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, if I may, I just wanted to clarify that the document, the SEQA document is a negative, a mitigated negative declaration. It is not a environmental impact report.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions? While staff, while, um,
Um, on the down payment assistance program for those 15 homes, is that an assistance program from the city of West Covina or something that they would have to apply with, like Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac? And what, would they be even, because there are conforming loan limits for those loans. So what, you know, or what they would be able to apply for? What, what kind of down payment assistance would that be?
So, Vice Chair Priscilla, we, um, one of the requirements in moving forward with this project was to provide some kind of housing program or assistance. And the, so what was agreed upon was this down payment assistance program where it would be targeted for public sector employees. That includes teachers, firefighters, anyone that works for public, in the public sector. It was a program of up to 150,000. There is no income restrictions. It's a program that the developer is going to be putting together. And then the city will be working with them on approving the program that they develop. But the intent was for public sector employees for a down payment assistance program of up to 150,000.
Is that for each of the 15?
Uh, up to 100, the program total is up to 150,000. And I think a minimum of 50, or 15 homes. So it equates to 10,000 per home.
A question, so what, who, who suggested the limitation to just public sector employees?
I believe that was what was agreed upon between the city and Lewis Homes, or Lewis Development, when the project was initiated.
And, and so that was an agreement with the, so who made the agreement? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
As in staff or?
Yeah, was it, was it a staff determination that it's limited to just public sector employees or?
Yes, it was staff that made that recommendation.
And I, I, I guess I'm, I, I guess I'm a little questioning why it's limited to public sector employees. And, and I'll also say, there is a chasm between teachers and what police officers and firefighters make in the state of California. And so, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it just because of that. But I'll, I'll say, I, I think if we're trying to help people who have lower incomes, I, I think this, this ought to be more narrowly tailored if, if that is the case.
I think that we can definitely take your comments into consideration as I think, and we can talk further, but it's a program that has not been set in stone. It's something that, you know, we can take recommendations and adjust it accordingly.
I guess to add to what our Commissioner Nick Lewis was questioning is that why not open up to all the residents in, in, in the city of West Covina?
I'm sorry, to what?
I'm just asking to see why not open up to all the residents in the city of West Covina, not just one sector. Go ahead.
For the, so, public sector for police and fire is what it reads now?
I'm sorry?
The program will only benefit police and fire?
Those are just examples. If it's a public sector employee from anyone.
And that's for any agency or specifically for the West Covina Police and Fire Department or?
Once again, the program hasn't, the guidelines haven't been established. I think we'd like to maybe give, you know, a preference to West Covina employees and or residents. And then depending on their interest or their ability to qualify for the homes themselves, you know, make sure that those 15 units are filled.
So, I, I think that's a great idea. And I think, but I also hear Commissioner Lewis's concern. And I think there's, I think the public sector employees should be more broader to ensure that, and maybe the city attorney could elaborate a little more on that to ensure equal access to that application process. So, the city's not liable to say that we're only catering to two groups while eliminating other public sector groups. And so maybe the city attorney could elaborate on the city's responsibility to ensure a more broader, if a more broader spectrum is needed in accordance to the law and the civil code. And also, I think it's important that if we do create a program like this, that there's safeguards in place that prevent fraud and misuse of that program to ensure that there's fairness in this process.
I just want to clarify, we did give examples of teachers, police, and fire. Those are the most common, you know, occupations, but it's definitely not limited to those three.
Now, $10,000 only because I, $10,000 is, that go a long way for the purchase of house unless, you know, they want to contribute that towards the closing costs of the purchase. But the reason I was asking, so it's not really down payment assistance. It'll be like a credit towards purchasing, which a lot of the developers give that to all of them as long as they use their lender or go through, you know, them for their financing needs. But they would, I guess what they're saying is they're only going to give it to 15 homes. Right? That $10,000, a $10,000 credit? That they're only going to offer, see, because it can't be in the form of a down payment. If it's only 10,000, they can give it towards the closing costs. So they're only going to offer that to those 15 homes, not to all of the purchases.
Thank you. I, I do have a questions for our environmental impact consultants. Yeah, and I understand that we went through the five significant findings. I like to hear, and also our residents too, like to hear the other 15 or so items that are considered not, not, not significant impacts. Can you go through those item quickly, why it's not significant impact, starting with aesthetics? Yes, if you could just summarize a really quick one, go through the list, because there were 15 of them. But you talked about five significantly impact. But I'm sure all residents and for us too, why is it the others are not significant? If you can just give us. Joanne, can you put that list up again, please?
Okay, so the five, the 15 topics start with aesthetics, agriculture, air quality, energy, greenhouse hazards, hydrology, land use, mineral resources, population, housing, public services, recreation, transportation, utilities, and wildlife. I'm sorry, wildfire. In terms of aesthetics, we determine that, and by the way, these topics are included in the environmental document. And detailed analyses are provided for each of the threshold questions within each topic. In terms of aesthetics, we determine that there are no scenic vistas and there are no designated scenic highways in the vicinity of the project such that construction and operation of the project would impact these resources. The project will change the existing views of the site, that is for sure. But the development is compatible with the existing uses. And then in addition, the private, the project has provided or will include sufficient buffers between the existing uses and the development. Last but not least in this, under this topic, is lighting. Lighting is not a new phenomenon in this area. There's existing ambient lighting already and night lighting already in the area. And this is just the nature of being within an environment, an urban environment and a developed environment. In terms of agricultural and forestry, the site is not zoned for agricultural resources. And there are no agricultural areas in the vicinity of the site such that would be impacted by development of the project. I will leave air quality, energy, GHG, and noise for my colleague here, Daria, who is our resource, who is our technical specialist. So, I'm gonna skip through those and she will talk about them. In terms of hazards and hazardous materials, reports have been prepared. Although there's demolition activities, there will be demolition activities. But the reports have measures in place. And also, there are a number of federal, state, and city requirements that the project will comply with in terms of demolition and construction activities. And additionally, the project site is not on a list of hazardous material sites. Hydrology, I think in terms of hydrology and improvements, I believe Glenn would be the best person to provide information. But bottom line is that both during construction and operation and operation activities, the project will basically seek a permit, an NPDES, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, or it's gonna fall under NPDES general construction permit, according to which there will be a, a study prepared that will include best management practices, that will provide the guidance to project in terms of not resulting in significant water quality impacts. And same is true for the operation phase of the project. And then in terms of specific improvements, as I said, I'm sure Glenn will speak to those more specifically. In terms of land use and planning, we have determined that the first threshold of this topic talks about displacing existing uses on the site. And that is not true for the project, the existing, there is no existing use on the site. It's vacant. There is no residential uses on the site that would be displaced by the project. And we went also through an analysis of compatibility or consistency, I should say, with city's general plan policies. And our conclusion was that overall, the project is consistent with those policies. Mineral resources, the site is not designated as a mineral resources extraction site. There are known, there are no known mineral resources extraction site in the vicinity of the project that would be impacted by development of walnut growth project. Population and housing, yes, the project will include or will generate a total of 529 people on the site. But in comparison to the population of the city, it is 0.1% of the population of the city. So it is not considered a significant direct impact. And then additionally, there are no residences on the site that would be displaced by the proposed project. Public services, based on our analysis, the project's demand for additional services are within the existing capacity. The project is not gonna result or will not require additional personnel to be added in order to serve the new development. So we determined the impacts would be less than significant. Recreation, a number of, and also actually regarding public services, the applicant is gonna pay development impact fees that would mitigate some of the impacts. Recreation, some of this demand will be met onsite with the provision of the open space, a central, in a central location, and a public park. In addition, the applicant is gonna pay park fees that will mitigate some of the increase in demand for recreation services. Transportation, based on the analysis that was conducted, and by the way, my colleague Darlene is online. She's our traffic engineer. And if there are any specific questions about traffic, she'll be happy to address your questions and concerns. But overall, the project will generate trips, a total of 1,124, which is considered a minor increase. Utilities and service system, again, the project will increase the demand, but the demand is not beyond the capacity of the existing utility providers. As such, we consider the impacts to be less than significant. And wildfire, sorry, not wildlife, the project is not in a very high-risk fire hazard area. And there are no such areas in the vicinity of the project. The project is in a very well-established urban environment within the city. So that risk is less than significant.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll speak to air quality, energy, and greenhouse gas. I know Alia already went over noise. So for air quality, there are four thresholds. And basically, they have to do with complying with an applicable air quality management plan. So the, for the AQMD, South Coast Air Quality Management District, and a couple others. So basically, what we did was modeled the air quality emissions from construction and operation of the project, and how it would contribute to mass regional thresholds. And so that's the Air Quality Management District, AQMD thresholds, on a regional level and also on a local level. So what's literally occurring onsite, and what could impact the residences and anyone around, any sensitive receptors. So with that being said, for both of those, regional and localized emissions, they were found to be less than significant and under the thresholds for construction and operation on a mass, mass level, on a regional level, and on a local level. So with that, that actually didn't require mitigation. And it requires compliance with Rule 403 for the AQMD, which is for fugitive dust, making sure that there isn't any visible dust and that the, you know, public is protected from that. It's a very strict rule. And Rule 402, which is basically protecting from any, like, any nuisances or any other emissions or odors coming from the site at all. So that covers other emissions, and it also covers cumulative air quality impacts. So on the same note, for, I'll just jump to GHG, the greenhouse gas emissions. So we also modeled that. And that takes into account pretty much everything. So it takes into account the construction of the project, the mobile trips, what the, you know, the natural gas being used, the energy, electrical, et cetera. And it, we found it to be under the 3,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent threshold that is recommended by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And that we found that it would not have a significant impact on the environment and would not conflict with any applicable plans. So the project would be complying with Title 24 green building standards. And, you know, in general, when you put new development in, it requires more stringent regulations. So basically, like, new, single-family homes may need to have, you know, 50% of their energy needs to come from solar and all of these things. And that is what the applicant would have to comply with. So on that same note, for energy, the energy analysis basically goes through how much energy is consumed during construction and operation, and found it to be typical of a project, and that it would not conflict with any energy plan or anything that would impact the environment negatively. So that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you both for explaining all the 20 items that's on the impact list. And does anyone else have questions? Because I might, if, well, let me continue because there's a, you do have a traffic consultant online, is that correct? I was wondering if I can ask her, or him, I forgot who it was. If we, if she can explain with the addition of 158 homes, and you had mentioned 500 and something residents or so that might potentially live there, how is the traffic being mitigated?
Hey, so this is Darlene, you know, her with Thomas, the traffic consultant, or, you know, did the traffic work on this project. So there are a couple of things. I mean, with the, the new process for reviewing potential transportation impacts, traffic impacts under CEQA, the focus really is on the VMT. And as Alia mentioned in the presentation, this project is located in a transit priority area, which, under the city guidelines, indicates that it is exempt from VMT analysis. And the thought behind that is that if there's good and easy and close access to transit services, to good transit services, that people at the development, whether it's a residential development, or an office, or retail, whatever it might be, would, are generally going to be more likely to use those transit services, and maybe not drive quite as much. And then on the level of service side, which is, I guess, more of the, the typical way that we used to look at traffic impacts. Because of the project and its location and the VMT exemption, level of service was not specifically evaluated. Part of that is that the project itself, although we will have 158 units, we're looking at adding at most about 106 vehicle trips in the peak hour. That when distributed, those trips when distributed between, you know, the different directions of travel and inbound and outbound, as those trips are distributed from the site will not have, are not expected to have any sort of significant impact on operations of the adjacent intersections. So the focus for this particular study was really more on ensuring safe access to the site. So we, we actually looked at the, the sites, the site visibility triangle. So the ability for drivers leaving the site to see traffic coming, so they could make a safe movement exiting. And just, I mean, the, the access within the site itself. So we, we actually did not do a detailed delay analysis because given, again, given the, the size of the site, the amount of trips that are expected to be generated, and the location, the, those trips sort of fall below the threshold of requiring that analysis.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for explaining the, the impacts and the summaries of the findings. It really helps to explain to all the commissioners and also as well as the residents who will, who live close by and who can hear all the impacts and what the studies are all about. Thank you so much.
Okay.
I have a question. When regards to, has any traffic studies been done in regards to the traffic on Roland Avenue? In regard to if a crosswalk's needed because of all the new residents are, are expected to move into that area? Has any studies been done to see if a crosswalk or a streetlight may be needed? Because I know on Roland Avenue, there is extremely fast cars that go on that street, and it's right adjacent to obviously Assusa Avenue. So my concern will be is that has any studies been done to see if, if crosswalks or streetlights are needed for that new development?
Jenna, would you please unmute yourself?
Our traffic engineer, the city's traffic engineer, Jenna Robbins, is, is on Zoom. And she may be able to address that question.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. At this point, no analysis has been done on Roland. Roland has a 40 mile per hour speed limit. So it's not likely that we would put a uncontrolled crosswalk across Roland. The project itself is within 400 feet of a major signalized intersection. So we would expect them to use the protected crossing at the intersection. I know that some traffic calming questions has come up. And it is something that we can address on the side, on a city level, but not in regards to this project. This project looked at access and followed the traffic city guidelines. So in your, in answer to your question that no studies have not been conducted yet on Roland. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for the traffic engineer. With regard to this proposed project, I, I'm curious, just looking back at a number of different projects, infill developments that the city of West Covina has approved over the past 10 to 15 years. Have we, have we imposed any traffic calming measures as to any of the new developments that have gone into the city in, in an infill context over the last 10 to 15 years? I'll, I'll talk about, like, the, there's, there's one over between Garvey, or, excuse me, off of Garvey, between Baranca and, and Grand. And then there's, there's two developments off of Lark Ellen between, I believe that's, I think the, I think the nearest cross would probably be Walnut Creek and, and Cameron. There's also a development off of, well, where Valinda turns into West Covina Parkway. I, I think those are probably the most analogous that I can think of that we've done in, in recent history. Have we, have we seen any need to do any traffic calming measures for any of those developments?
I can only speak on the last couple of years that I've been with the city. And in some cases, yes, there are traffic calming measures that are part of a project. Let's say you have a development where right across the street is a big shopping center or something. So then they're gonna have to look to see if it, it warrants a signal, or it warrants a crosswalk, or, so there's things we have to look at to see if the development has enough traffic, enough pedestrians to warrant improvement. So to answer your question, sometimes we do. It's, it's like traffic calming on this particular project is, we needed to have clear sight distance. So they're going to be eliminating, you know, they have to provide red curb along the frontage so that when cars come in and out of the project, they have clear visibility of approaching cars. In some cases, driveway access may meet the warrants to have a signal. But in this case, if you look at their trip generation coming out of their driveways during the peak hours, they have 36 vehicles making a left and 15 making a right. It's not gonna meet warrants for a signal in this case. Most of the time when we do, yes, go ahead.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get at whether or not we've had to install any specific traffic calming measures with regard to these higher density infill developments in, in, in this city in the past 10, 15 years. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to see what the, what, what, what past precedent has kind of dictated with regard to this, just so that we can kind of have an understanding of issues that have come up subsequent with regard to any development that has been approved by, by the planning department or this commission writ large over the past decade plus, just to kind of, kind of gauge things that, that maybe we should be looking at potentially before we, we approve or, or deny the project.
I would say, just as a general answer, is that normally, we don't look at traffic calming measures in regards to a specific project unless it has, you know, like bicycle or seniors walking, something like that. So.
So just, just so we're clear, is, I, I just want to understand if there, if there is anything that, that you're specifically aware of that, that we've done for, for any, any of these infill projects?
I am not aware of any. I'm not sure if someone who's been longer could answer that question.
I appreciate that.
I, I think it's, I think it's, oh, sorry. I think it's important that if, if possible, if, if staff or can, can do a report on traffic there. Because I think that having a, this is a beautiful development, but I think having a development of this a development of this size is going to require a study to be done, because there most likely may be seniors who move into that development, and I think it's our job to do due diligence and conduct that study to see if a crosswalk, or a streetlight, or whatever it may be, to assure, because we have, I mean, obviously, a major shopping center across the street, one on the side of it, and I think it's important that if staff, if they're willing to, is to do a study like that.
We can initiate-
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Joanne. We can initiate a study and look at the traffic on Roland, and look at any items that could be installed as traffic calming. It would need to be taken to the Traffic Commission, and then ultimately to council to make a final decision on any improvements that are made on that street.
Thank you. Commissioner Posera?
Maybe this is a question for Joanne. Joanne, do we have any other, is this the largest, would this be the largest development of that size for the, that kind of division or subdivisions of properties, or development?
We did, I don't know if you're familiar with-
Oh, the one on Lark Ellen, Glendora Avenue? Where Dove Day School is, and the church, where they knocked down, that was pretty big, too, right? I don't know how many units that was. Honey?
Sorry, what was your question?
I just wanted to know if we had any other development of that size, so I'm not sure if that development was equal, or greater, or lesser than that, than this development.
The Glendora, the lakes, the colony at the lakes on Glendora Avenue, I think that was one of our more recent, larger projects. I think that was six, seven acres, with 450 units on there.
Wow. You know, that's interesting, because I almost sometimes think that, does anybody even live there? I never see any traffic coming out of there. But, what I wanted to ask is, is there another development that this builder is similar to this size, that maybe we can take a look at, or review for those type of studies?
In the city, or just if he-
In the surrounding area, or, you know, if, you know, not too far away, but something that we would be able to take a look at?
I think they might be able to provide a better answer on that.
Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Hi, Russell Hildebrand, Deputy City Attorney. I just, to address a couple of the things I've heard tonight, I don't want us to lose track of the process, and I think part of what our environmental team was, and the traffic folks were trying to point out is, first, to your point, that there is no real past precedence in, when it comes to these land uses, because each, as I say in the real estate business, each piece of property is unique, and they always have individual circumstances, and they might at first blush look very similar, but there's something about the specific circumstances that you can automatically assume that's why we do all of the, all the work they do behind the scenes to analyze these projects. And in terms of the traffic impact study, there are area plans, your council of governments have plans for population increases and transportation, and then that flows into your general plan, and it flows down into your circulation element of the general plan. And so, these major plans are looking at the capacities of your street system, and how they expect it to flow, and what growth they can already entertain, and that's built into the circulation element of your general plan. Now, you're going to move down to the next level of thresholds, and your state public resources code, which is the California Environmental Equality Act, and the guidelines that are, you hear it as the CEQA guidelines, they further refine the thresholds and the limits, and what the triggers are for identifying impacts or no impacts. And in this particular case, they've, our environmental team, and the city staff, have followed all of those processes and procedures, and they follow all those trails of thresholds down. So, it's not really proper to suddenly say, "Well, even though you've done all of that work, we should, we just want another study." I mean, that's not really how this should be proceeding. So, if there's specific questions about the analysis, but you've got a bunch of, you know, trained engineers who have looked at this project and said, "We find that there won't be impacts," and they're the traffic specialists, and there's a certain amount of reliance you need to have on them, as well as the fact that you've got a traffic commission that's constantly looking at these situations as they develop, because, like all of your planning work, you're trying to make your best guess as to, you're looking into the future, about how this project is going to interact with your community. But you don't really know, so you've got to have those follow-up processes to make sure that if there are any problems, that they get addressed in a timely manner. So, I encourage you to, you know, we've got a project in front of us tonight, with some very specific parameters, and we don't want to get too far off track of staying focused and moving that along.
Thank you for summarizing all that, but I think it's important for all residents, and also for our commissioners, to understand, since we have our environment impact, all the consultants are here. So, if, this is a perfect time to ask questions, and if we have all staff, it's also here on Zoom meetings, so that all the general public can also hear about traffic. I understand that this particular project is unique, in the sense that it is very close to the Azusa Street. In Azusa, if you drive on it and you live for a long time, it is a very busy street, and this is right next to it. And not only that, it's right next to it, there's two lanes. One lane is going one direction, which is east, one lane is going west. You can't even go west out of this particular project, even if you want to. So, given that into considerations, and also, as a resident, that's, that particular project and that land is unique in the sense that it was used for a school for a long time, and that was a drop-off point, meaning that there's no other area, I believe, that the students would drop off, but then again, it has been closed for a long time. Well, I don't know how long it is, but it's closed. It looks like a ghost town right now. So, I understand that we are changing the area, but we also need to understand that, okay, maybe we need to understand, too, as a commissioner, and also the resident, to see that, hey, when the school was open, was there more traffic? Or it will be less traffic that we develop this area? We don't know that, and the residents, I don't know if you lived there a long time, and when the school was open, maybe you might know, but if you just recently bought the house a year ago, you may not know. So, that's why it's important that when we have all the consultants here, and all the commissioners here, and then later on, we can ask all the questions, so we understand all the questions, so we can make a good recommendations to our city councils. So, thank you so much for actually-
I apologize, I wasn't intending to criticize-
No, no, no.
-the kind of questioning, I was just trying-
No, 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 you are helping, you are, it is the summaries, and we also need to understand, because the environment impact report, they've been doing a study for a long time, and this may be, we might hear about it, but we also, it's important that we have this public hearing meeting and have discussions about it. So, thank you, everyone, for asking all the questions, and we, I mean-
One more question.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. In regards, yeah, we may be asking different questions, and I think it's just, questions we're asking, so we can understand the project more, and unnecessary that we're going to use those questions to make our decision, but understanding the project to a fuller scale. But, my last question is, under state law, under law, and one of the reasons why I was asking this, is that instead of putting a burden on rescuing taxpayers, that because it's in the planning and building process, isn't it, isn't it an ability to work with the developer, to try to, to work with the developer, to invest funding if a crosswalk is needed in conjunction with their project?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. And if we don't have any more questions, let's open up to public hearing. I don't hear any more questions, so let's open up, oh, actually, the developer. So, I guess we're going to hear a testimony from the applicant, and then those in favor, and then those opposed. Please. Please come up here.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and members of staff, and the public. My name is Glenn Crosby, and I'm here representing the Lewis Companies. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you here tonight. Thank you. Two of the first projects I worked on, coming out of Cal Poly Environmental Design, were Sunset Palms and Sunrise Palms, right here in West Covina. I jumped at the opportunity to come back and work for the Lewis family several years ago, and it's really nice to be back here in West Covina as well. I also want to thank the neighbors who have shared feedback and concerns with us, either at neighborhood meeting, individual appointments we had on the site, or through phone and email communications. It's been a little more challenging, as you can imagine, given the COVID circumstances, but we have made every effort to address those concerns, and those that have been submitted to us. I understand, certainly, the disappointment from neighbors that they may have with the development of the site, that's understandable. It's an infill site, they've been used to certain circumstances for a long period of time, but I really do appreciate the objectivity and the fairness that many of the surrounding owners have demonstrated in sharing their concerns with us. The feedback was also instrumental in sharing, in shaping the elements of our project, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail, but the project design before you tonight incorporates a lot of the feedback we received from the surrounding owners. The cul-de-sac, particularly on the north side, drainage, which we touched on earlier, windows, parking, a landscape buffer surrounding the property, and the wall configuration, all of those reflect input that we've received from neighbors. You can go to the first slide, Joanne.
Glenn?
Oh, great, thank you.
Is it on?
One thing I want to point out is, the entire east side of our property, and half of the northern boundary, as you'll see, is adjacent to commercial. Our focus from the beginning was really to achieve a more purposeful transition, something that was thoughtful, between what was happening on the commercial side, and transitioning ultimately to the single-family residential surrounding the property. And we believe we've accomplished that by planting the higher-density homes, the attached homes, on the east side of the project, and then transferred to the detached cluster-style homes on the west side of the project. Definitely provides a more reasonable gradation of intensity of use, as you move across the site from the east to the west. One of the things you'll notice up here on the slide is the surrounding buffer, that extends well above the perimeter wall, on both the north and the west side of the project. This is based on neighbor feedback, they were concerned that the wall may not be sufficient to preserve privacy between the adjacent uses, so we proposed an evergreen, seven-foot wide, seven-and-a-half-foot wide buffer between the property and the wall there, with the expectation that the homeowners association will ultimately maintain that for uniformity, and keep that at a height that provides additional privacy over the wall, up to about 10 feet. There were some owners on the north side who expressed some concern with solar exposure, due to solar panels they have on their home, so that will also be taken into account, that the 10-foot, we met on-site with them, appears to be conducive to avoiding any type of blocking of those facilities on the roof. The other thing was drainage. Some of the feedback we received from owners was that the drainage there, up on the north end, it comes out of the commercial, there's off-site drainage, comes out of the commercial site, and then it would cut across over to Eileen. It was blocked in a few locations, it ultimately comes down along the west side of the property, where it again was obstructed, and was creating some flooding conditions. So, what we've done with our plan is intercepted that off-site drainage at the Eileen cul-de-sac, and we're bringing it down, separating it from the project's storm drain, and bringing that down through the project, and slowing that down, so that it's metered out over a longer period of time. And the same thing will happen for the project's drainage. We have infiltration basins that are going through the drive on the west side, underneath the parking stalls, and those will allow the water to be slowed, infiltrated, and then metered out, so that it's not, right now, in a storm event, the water from the commercial side on the north, and all of the project side, which is probably about 50% covered between the school building and asphalt, it just sheetflows right out onto Roland. So, by doing that, we'll be able to meter out that, those flows, over, you know, a 48-hour period, well outside the storm event, that will help mitigate some of what's happening down on Roland Avenue. We can't obviously change the existing condition, I know Roland has some challenges in and of itself, but certainly, we can make sure we're not contributing to that issue. One of the most, or I should say, the first concerns that we heard in our meetings, and even before a meeting with any of the owners, was about apartments up there, and I did want to, you know, make it clear that these are for-sale homes, we are not looking at an apartment project. That concern was closely followed by the preservation of the cul-de-sacs. Living on a cul-de-sac myself, with children, I understand, you know, the, you get used to that, it's a comfortable thing to have, you know your kids are down there, kind of in that pocket, out of the typical traffic flow. So, we made the decision very early on to keep the cul-de-sac out of our project, we're not punching it through, and in fact, we took it another step, after meeting with the surrounding owners there. The concern was, well, what happens if people start parking up here for our project, and they're just using that as an access point, to get to the homes up there on the north side? So, what we've done is- Skip at the same time I did. So, what we've done up in that cul-de-sac, as you can see, is we have incorporated a solid block wall around the entire bulb of the cul-de-sac, and there are no penetrations through that wall. By no penetration, I mean no pedestrian aisleways, or anything that would allow someone to park, and then just access the unit, or have one of their friends come over and access the unit. The only access through there is an emergency vehicle access there at the end of the bulb in that cul-de-sac. Again, that was, that was good feedback that we received from the owners, we understand the concerns of not having that continuous block wall. The other thing we heard in that specific area is, there's a lot of people that just park down there, and probably are not helping things, they hang out at night, it's also been kind of a transition point. So, one thing that we're looking at, right at the EVA point there, is to see if we can do something with some lighting, not anything that's going to broadcast out into the adjacent neighborhood, but certainly something, there's a void there, there's not a streetlight within close proximity to that particular bulb, and a number of the owners expressed concern to us, if there was something we could do, just to discourage people from parking there and hanging out in the evening, and so, we're looking at that with them as well. In addition, on the east side of the project, along those same lines, you know, one of the concerns raised was, there's a very short wall there, on the existing commercial side. People hop that wall all the time, and it's only, you know, probably four feet in several sections, and that's, you saw some of the reports with the arrests and other problem activity on the site over the years. We are going to remove that wall in its entirety, and replace- We are going to remove that wall in its entirety and replace that with a taller wall that prevents people from, not everyone, but prevents the troublemakers from crossing through in that section of the property. This is the central private park plan, as you can see, we've incorporated a totlot, open turf area, and a covered shade structure. The other thing we've done is included bike racks at the park location to accommodate visiting guests. You heard some comments earlier about the transit priority area, and this will allow, you know, visitors to come in, they have a place where they can park their bike, they don't have to drive a car to the community and visit their guests. I'm not gonna get too deep into the architecture, Joanne did a very comprehensive job in covering that in terms of the street scenes from Roland on both the west-side drive facing north and the drive heading up on the east side. One of the things I do want to point out is we took a lot of care in selecting these architectural styles, we didn't just pull these off the shelves, the farmhouse cottage and Spanish Colonial, they exhibit some of the same features that are in some of the surrounding homes. It's a very eclectic neighborhood, there's a lot of styles that are incorporated adjacent, we wanted to make sure we had a similar blend, but also pulling some of those same elements, those architectural elements that we see in the adjacent neighborhood. Again, this is the, these are the townhomes, the attached product, the building reflects a lot of architectural projections and articulation along the entire vertical plane, covered porches, as you can see, covered decks, railing, we have varying roof elements, ridges, and eve heights, and then the color gradations. And the intent of that obviously is to get rid of that massing that makes it look like just one giant, you know, Backman Albertsons or something, we want this to have some nice architectural quality, really enhance the individual nature, even with the color schemes that pull out and enhance the individual units within the building. This illustration is just to demonstrate, you know, the access into each of the types of units, on the left is the cluster style, so you can see the paseos that allow access in there for the pedestrian, and then the vehicular access into the auto court area. And again, we've tried to incorporate plant material where we can, even as you can see the parking stalls out on the face of those units where we have the diamond planters interspersed within the parking there, and then also a strong vertical element with Italian cypress at the end to allow that vertical element to extend up into the second story for those units. Go ahead and touch briefly on this, this is something that came up when we were meeting with a number of the owners, and I just wanted to illustrate exactly what Joanne was talking about, where we've purposely elevated those windows on the properties that are adjacent to the neighboring homes, and the windows, as you can see on the left side, that's the normal length of the window, on the right side, those are the shortened windows, so that you're basically restricted to looking straight out from your home and not looking down into the adjacent properties there, and that was the intent of that. And again, that was clearly based on site-specific feedback that we received from the neighbors. So in summary, I just wanted to touch on, you know, the proposed development and the tentative track map, as we've discussed, are consistent with the specific plan and design guidelines. We really believe this, we've made every effort to make this a purposeful transition to the surrounding homes, you know, it really wouldn't make sense to have single-family detached homes up next to the commercial on the east side. So even though this is an infill location, you know, we've done something that, you know, in planning you try to do even when you're starting with a blank canvas. Architectural styles I've mentioned have been selected to complement the surrounding neighborhood. The site design provides ample guest parking, and we're really trying to discourage overflow into the neighboring areas, that was another concern that came up in our site meetings was, you know, people parking up in the neighborhoods and how we could make sure and avoid that. One of the things that we're going to do is incorporate into the governing documents, the CCNRs for this community, the requirement that the residents need to use their garage for parking, so they can't just have a bunch of storage in there and have their cars, you know, dumped out on the street, creating problems both for the new development and for the surrounding development. Again, the landscape plan provides a seven-and-a-half-foot landscape buffer to enhance privacy. Believe we've incorporated some design solutions for the off-site drainage to be intercepted through the internal system, and then preservation of the Eileen Street cul-de-sac on the north end. One thing I did quickly want to touch on, since you brought it up moments ago, was with respect to Roland, although we didn't do a comprehensive traffic study on Roland Avenue, we did have our consultants evaluate what was happening on Roland and did look at a couple alternative solutions. As Jana pointed out, you know, one of the things that we looked at was a mid-block crossing with a flashing and full design, but those are problematic, as Council pointed out, that's why we have, you know, the experts in place, is to evaluate those and make sure we're not putting a crosswalk just because we hear some feedback from owners and say, hey, you know, this might be a good solution to put a crosswalk right here, you know, we have the experts weigh in and look at that, and there are problems introducing a mid-block crossing just because it's something that's not really expected in most cases, so no matter what type of flashing and other markings you do on the street, if people are used to that not being there and it's introduced mid-block, it sometimes creates some challenges. But we did look at Roland, and that's part of the solution we came up with, with the red curb along the frontage, that was purely based on line-of-sight concerns for the vehicles that would be exiting the property, and then also looking at the traffic calming measures by way of some striping influence out there on Roland. So again, although we didn't do a comprehensive traffic study, the project wasn't warranted to do that as it was analyzed, it was something we looked at, and largely in response to our meetings with the owners and just the feedback that they provided from historical incidents and things that have occurred out there on Roland. I appreciate your time, I'm here to answer any additional questions you may have, and thank you.
Thank you. You gonna hear from those in favor or those against?
Do you want to listen to the Zoom calls first or the people here today?
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Start that first.
Okay, so, let's get started. From my knowledge, I understand that there is one person in favor, and then I had asked multiple callers if they were in favor or against, and only a few answered, so starting off with in favor, gonna ask Jonathan Blackmore to unmute themselves.
Thank you, Planning Commission Chair and Planning Commission members, my name is Jonathan Blackmore, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services for Covina Valley Unified School District, and I'd like to say on behalf of our school district, we do think this project will have a positive impact on our district and our schools. I'd like to read a prepared statement. In response to the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact filed on this project received by Covina Valley Unified School District on November 19th, 2020, the district did not file a formal response during the period of November 19th through December 21st, 2020. The reason for no formal response was because the impact on the district and its students will be mitigated. Mitigation will be provided by funds derived from the sale of the property. Students generated from the project, increased enrollment, will attend Covina Valley schools, and developer fees payable to the district will be levied during construction to reduce the impact of students generated by the project on our local schools. The needs of the district generated as a result of this development have been met. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, that was the only person that I have in favor, so I'm gonna assume everyone else is opposed. Going down the list, Annabelle, would you please unmute yourself?
I'm sorry, Renee, I think I may have two people, let me ask first, Thomas Chrisor, are you against or opposed to the proj... Okay, so we're gonna wait until when he's finished, and then I have Amelia, are you against or opposed this project? Opposed, okay, thank you, and then we'll wait, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Once again, Annabelle, would you please unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm here listening with my dad, we live nearby, I guess we're just, we're opposed and we're just a little more concerned about, well, because I have two kids and I take them to Roland, and even during, like, the regular school year, when I would take them, it got pretty packed, so I guess that's what I was more worried about, people using our street as like a shortcut to get to the school or to avoid a zootage. Also, what were you... Just mostly traffic and...
Too many units?
And maybe the amount of units.
I'm assuming that concludes her concerns. Next up, Carlos Cueva, would you please unmute yourself?
Hey, good evening, we're kinda concerned about the same thing, hi, how you doing? You hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, we were concerned about similar, we're over here off of the, to the west, off of Eileen, Eckerman and like Home Rest behind to the west, and we've been lucky the past five years that we live here, being that it's kind of like a street that's kind of like a J shape and not a lot of people come through here, but we're just kinda concerned of the traffic coming in as far as the new development coming in, of people, you know, using this as a, as a thorough, you know, an open way to get away from the zootage traffic, but has there been any, any other concerns or questions that you guys have been asked about that street as far as Home Rest off of Pioneer there?
Could you repeat that question, please?
Have you guys had any questions or concerns from other residents in the area as far as the traffic on Home Rest in between Eileen and Pioneer?
So, public comment, is, you're allowed to make a statement, but we're not allowed to have dialogue in return?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, well, yeah, well, that's what we're concerned about, we have a quiet neighborhood here, and we're just...
Small children.
Well, yeah, we have small children, there's a lot of children on the street as well, including, most of our next-door neighbors have kids that range from two to 14, you know, and they enjoy playing in the street here, but we're just concerned with the traffic that's gonna be created by this project, and that's, you know, pretty much the reason why we are against, but that's my statement, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person on cue would be Carla Sanchez, so Carla Sanchez, would you please unmute yourself? Again, Carla Sanchez, would you please unmute yourself? We'll come back to her. Let's do Eddie DeCassis, would you please unmute yourself?
Hi there. Yeah, I'm just, my comment is just pretty simple, I'm concerned about the traffic and too many units and, you know, the school in the future, and, you know, it's pretty simple what I'm thinking, you know? And all the ACs, you know, when time comes up, yeah, they said a lot of things that, you know, they were in my mind. So that's my comment so far, traffic, too many units, not enough green area, and the school, and, you know, it's gonna be a lot of people in the future, that's my comment.
Great, thank you, Eddie.
You're welcome.
Next person I have here on cue, Jose Rodriguez, would you please unmute yourself? Ready when you are. Again, Jose Rodriguez, would you please unmute yourself? Okay, let's come back to Jose Rodriguez, next would be Tina, would you please unmute yourself?
Hello, so my first concern is the traffic like everybody else, when you look at the attached documents, the Commissioner's agenda, it states that the red zone was created in front of the actual structure, which means if you're gonna red-zone in front of the site, the adjacent homes on Roland on both sides, parking will be put there, regardless if we claim that they're not going to be, parking will start building up on that street on Roland, and we've already had in the past someone has passed away because they've been jaywalking on Roland, so jaywalking already exists on that Roland street, this property will increase the jaywalking, trying when you have guests coming, parking on Roland and going across. My other issue with the traffic in the attached documents, it also states that the median will be edited so that the exits and entrance will be reflective of the site, again, stated one of the Commissioners talked about, currently, if you're trying to exit Cedar Brothers and you're trying to exit Food for Less, and you're trying to make a right into Cedar Brothers, that is a very hectic intersection, and then now you're building within 10 feet of that intersection change right there, more in and out. So that wasn't addressed, really, they said the traffic study wasn't done that much, clearly that wasn't addressed, so my, a solution you would say is, okay, well, they can't make a left out of the site, well, again, if they don't make a left out of the site and they wanna go to Roland, they would cut through either North Leaf Avenue or Home Rest, so increasing the traffic within the cul-de-sacs that already exist. Another issue with the traffic is that it claimed in the study that there's only 106 people, which, when the school wasn't open, we've lived here since the school was open and closed, it never got that many, it was a continuation school, it was never a full school, so it was always a little amount of people. The other issue is before the school was closed, many people used it as a recreational site, they blocked their dogs, and I know there's a park being put in place, but that's not, it's not big enough, it's not showing what people were doing in that area before. Also, the negative noise pollution wasn't addressed, this is a quiet neighborhood, I think that needs to be more addressed, and the goal here, it seems that we want mixed housing to address the affordable housing issue that we have in California, but these homes aren't going to do that, you stated that only 15 homes would get the deduction or the credit, so again, these homes are gonna be priced really high, so we're not addressing the affordable housing crisis we have, so why build so many homes here? Why not just, if you really wanna build this site, why don't we focus on only building these detached homes? We see the plan, they're beautiful, why don't we just focus on that instead of doing more type townhomes? Those are the big issues, I don't think that... I don't think that it was kind of addressed, that people actually were using the site as, um, I think Carla said, he has young kids, people were going there, it was a nice yard to just throw a ball, walk your dog, and also, you can just hop the fence currently, so many people were still doing that even with schools closed. I think those issues weren't not addressed, and specifically, the traffic is a huge one that needs to be focused on. And, um, I really don't think we should change the zoning, I think we should focus on either building a single home or just leaving it the way it is, and expanding a beautiful park.
Great, thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to say I was opposed.
Noted, okay. Uh, so we have three more, three more callers. Uh, the next one would be William Sanchez, at this time I'll ask you to unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Well, most of our concerns are the same like everybody else. It's traffic with, uh, our white community that we have. We have a lot of elderly people walking, walking their dogs, the kids and everything. And also, if all of these townhomes, the three level ones that are back over here near the cul-de-sac, which is where I am, we have a pool, we have kids, and, you know, if people are two or three stories on top of our houses, our privacy goes away. And then even that block wall with, I believe it was a seven feet distancing, it's still, I don't think it would be enough to quiet down if there are any, you know, AC motors or AC units back there. And it's just privacy more than anything else, and traffic definitely on Roland will be crazy and we will be used as escape street, escape, um, ways to get out to, even just to go to, to Fuente. And so it's, you know, all those little things that have been, that have been not really explained, that, um, you know, will be hard for us to just all of a sudden give up because this new project is coming in. And, you know, I myself have two kids, and it would be, i- it would be bad for me and my kids that we won't be able to be in the front yard or, you know, just, just with more cars being in this whole area, you know, it, it's, I, I think it would just be a lot more traffic around as well. And so that's why I oppose.
Thank you, William.
Yeah, yeah, also, sorry. And most of this, our communities are single family homes, and if those townhomes and the multi-family homes that are being built there will take away from our small and close-knit community. That's about it.
Great, thank you, William. I'm going to, let's see, Andrew, um... Andrew, can you hear us? Oh, no, no, Andrew, uh, this next caller doesn't have a name, it just says iPhone, so...
I should speak, right? Should I speak?
Oh, I see. For the caller calling for iPhone. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Hello?
Hi, can you mute?
Caller, can you please mute your other equipment, please?
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, my main concern is, um, I live on the Eileen cul-de-sac, and, uh, in regards to it being a single family, uh, resident community, um, I would really appreciate it if we can keep everything as being a single family community. Um, all the homes around there, you know, um, there's a lot of families and it's a really close community, everyone, uh, looks out for one another, and I feel with this project of adding a hundred and sixty-three units, that's just throwing off the complete, um, dynamics of our community. So, I, I do understand that, you know, homes would need to be built there, but if we can negotiate and come up with a good number, I think that would be ideal for our community and to think of everyone's safety as well, because of course, like, everyone keeps bringing up is the issue with the, the traffic. And as far as traffic, also, you know, um, I have three children that go to the schools at Covina Valley, one at, uh, Roland, one at Trewick and one at Covina High School. As it is that part, I mean, the, the traffic around the school hours is insane. I mean, you literally take about a half an hour, you know, to get one way to school because of all the congestion, so I can just imagine the additional unit, it's just gonna increase that volume even higher. And, uh, I'm just concerned for the kids that need to walk to school and walk home as well. Um, I do see a lot of cars always speeding up and down Fuente and Roland and also through the avenue, so we really need to put our children first for their safety. Um, and I think with all these homes being built, we're not looking at that, we're not looking at putting our kids first, we're not putting our community first as well. But, um, that's just the main things that I wanted to touch on. And then also, uh, the walls, my, my walls is gonna be affected by the new homes that are, you know, that you guys are proposing to build. I feel that the distance between my home and these new homes is way too close. When I purchased my home, I bought my particular home because it isn't a cul-de-sac, and that right now, I currently only have one neighbor to the left of me. So I just feel having a hundred and sixty-three units on the opposite side, this is not something we signed up for as a community when we purchased our home on Eileen. So pretty much those are my main concerns, and, um, I am saddened, you know, that the privacy, you know, for my family will be affected largely, you know, having that many homes, it's gonna be, be very close to, to my home as far as the noise, the daily noise, and also when they start building. You know, so there's a lot of things that we really do need to, to look at and think about for all the homes in our communities, because we are all gonna be impacted by the noises, the traffic, and again, the safety for our children. And that's pretty much it for now.
Great, thank you. Uh, Chair Hang, uh, that concludes, um, all the participants on Zoom.
Thank you.
And then I've, um, given you the, uh, speaking cards for, um-
We're gonna start with everyone that who's out here that's opposed.
Great.
So it'll be, um, Teresa Cozer.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners and other guests. I kinda had something planned, but after all of the presentations, some of my, um, questions were answered. But actually, we're here tonight, all of us residents, to ask you to table-
Madam Chair, is her microphone on? I can, I can't, I can really-
How do I turn it on?
Just move the mic towards you.
Lower, there you go.
There we go? Is that better?
Better.
Great, okay. All of us residents are here tonight to ask you to table indefinitely the motion to approve this project right now. We're not considered, you're not really against, future happens, it's going to happen. I've lived here all my life, I played in the Orange Grove at where Pioneer School was, I went to Pioneer School, I did an adult ed at Pioneer School, and now there's gonna be a housing project. That's not so much the issue, is that there are lots of concerns that we have, and those concerns have not been addressed. Last summer, the residents who live within three hundred feet of the project were contacted, and that's basically just those houses that are right next to the project. No one else was contacted. Then in November and December, the city posted a notice that anyone could email the city about questions or concerns on the project, and they would forward those concerns to the developer. The plans were posted on the city's website as well as a description of the project. Many residents had questions, concerns, which were, they were told to email to the city and they would be forwarded to the developer. I and a couple of other residents actually met with Ms. Burns, she was wonderful, to see the plans. We were told that the plans had been submitted and to submit any questions or comments via email to the city and they would be forwarded to the developer. So we have not had any contact with the developer, everything is via email. In February, the city posted the developer's replies to the questions of the residents. Those replies did not adequately answer our concerns. The developer used illegal jargon such as, "This is a specific site plan, therefore, we could ask for a zone change to build a hundred and fifty-eight units in nine acres." They also did not do in-depth dev-, um, environmental studies because they felt they weren't warranted as the, um, woman stated earlier. Another reason the developer used to not answer our questions, especially about the amount of traffic, which is coming up a lot tonight, is that, that the development would generate, on the surrounding streets, is that this does not pertain directly to the project, and you can see all these answers on the website. And then tonight I learned that they are exempt from some, for some reason, because this is a traffic, a transportation hub. You know what that transportation hub means? There's a bus that runs up and down Azusa and there's a bus that runs up and down Roland. That's what they consider a transportation hub. Now, these houses are going to sell for how much money? Five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars? The people that buy these houses, are they gonna use the bus? No. So I don't, that reasoning that it qualifies for transportation hub because there are two buses that run per- are perpendicular, that just doesn't make sense to me. And finally, the question about design, because we had some questions about design too, especially the lack of green space, even though it looks like they have a lot of landscape, there isn't a lot of landscape going in there, as well as there is a parking lot in the front of the project. No one has mentioned that tonight. So if you look at your plans, there's a parking lot in the front of the project. That isn't a very good design as far as I'm concerned. That doesn't reflect well for our city, it doesn't beautify our city to have a parking lot in the front of a housing project. And, and these, these comments and concerns were addressed by the developer by saying those were our opinions, and the developer has their opinions, but I feel like our opinions count also. And I do have one other question now, hearing the presentation tonight, that the developer is going to pay like a million dollar parks fee to the city because they're developing so little land as a park inside their project? What's gonna happen to that money? Does that go into a general fund in the city? Does that go to for parks only in the city? Because the north area, north of the freeway in West Covina is a park desert, it is designated a park desert. We have two parks. We have Palm View Park and we have Del Nordy Park at the other end. Those are the only two parks. Okay, I'm done. And so it's gonna be a lot of people for those two parks, how is that gonna benefit us? So again, I'd just like to say, we residents are asking you to indefinitely table this until we can meet with the developer, all of us in a large group to discuss these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I have next Paul Hamilton.
Good evening, commissioners and the planning, planning commissioners and the staff members. Um, I too am a resident in the area. I have lived here about five years, um, as my neighbors have spoken before me, I too would like to speak about our concerns with the Walnut Grove residential project located on Roland Avenue. I would like to request that the, the members and the board members would listen to our voices and concerns by tabling the project to allow more appropriate design that has less impact on our community and the surrounding neighborhood. We see a lot of homes being built here, a hundred and fifty-eight residential condominium units, um, three-story townhomes, two-story, single-family residential-style detached units, um, and this is only on a nine-acre lot. This will have a negative impact on the surrounding community both aesthetically and environmentally. There is a lack of green space for the residents to enjoy, we are asking for more green space to be considered to allow more aesthetic appeal to the surrounding neighborhood and allow more space between the perimeter wall and backyard to help improve the noise level of air conditioners running in the summer and maintaining the privacy for the existing homes adjacent to the property. We request at a minimum twenty-five foot of buffer zone with tall, low-maintenance hedges planted within the buffer zone to help maintain the privacy for the neighbors. We also request that the oak trees be protected by the state of California, um, not to be removed, but they are gonna be replaced, we consider that. The parking is limited, as we've all discussed, um, there is a parking lot in the front as well, um, but this, as we discussed and everyone else has, about the impact of the traffic flow on Roland Avenue, Leaf, Pioneer, Eckerman, Home Rest, Butterfield and Eileen Streets within the neighborhood, this traffic will also potentially cause accidents on Roland and with the increased pedestrians, especially the children walking down Roland from Trewick and other schools close and nearby strip malls. We would like to request more parking within the development as well as keeping the parking away from the front entrances. This will help improve the aesthetic appeal to the neighborhood and improve the security to reduce the theft and homeless population from living in the open space of the parking lot. We would also like to request that appropriate trash dispensers be placed within the development to allow convenient access for the community. Uh, we think if the trash dispensers are not convenient for them, they're, the, the member or the residents will end up putting the trash barrels out on Roland Avenue. We also would like to request Mr. Crosby, reach out to all the residents in the neighborhood that are more than three hundred feet from the property and listen to all of our concerns. Most of the residents have lived in the neighborhood for a long time, we've had their family moved into their home, and this neighborhood is a more attractive neighborhood in the community, and we would like the finished development to be part of our existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Susan Aratus.
Hi. We, the people of this community of West Covina, want to table this hearing and tell contractors in the city of West Covina, West Covina, reconsider the plans on Walnut Grove with the concerns of the homeowners that have written you and have sent emails to you and have spoken to you regarding all of their concerns, because it affects our way of life and our neighborhood is going to be impacted by your decision. Which of you would want this project next door to your home? The development has zero benefits for us, but still, we want to work with you. Do you wanna work with us? Do, uh, what is right for the existing homeowners and the families that will be moving in? We have tried to cover all of our concerns and I'm sure there'll be more to come. We have tried to cover all of our concerns and I'm sure there'll be more to come. Too many units. We have been told there'd be 15 units per acre. Tonight, we saw that there's going to be 20 units per acre. Okay, you just take 158 units times two because mom and dad are going to have a car, that's 316 cars. Or you've got maybe 100 teenagers that go to drive, that's 416 cars. And when they start renting their rooms in some of these houses because they can't meet their mortgage payment, let's just say another 100, 516 cars. No, 106 cars will not leave that neighborhood in the morning or come back in the evening. It'll be close to 500. How do we know this? Because we've lived through it. My children went to all the schools up and down and that traffic on Roland is ridiculous and the traffic on Puente. And like everyone else said, I won't go through all the streets they're going to go through. Okay. Also, we want the walls to be high enough so that no one can look in at us and we can have our privacy and they can't climb. So a six-foot wall is not going to help. In my day, younger, I could get over a six-foot wall. I couldn't do it today. But I know young boys and homeless people, we've seen it done because we live on the cul-de-sac of Eileen. Okay? Seven to eight foot would give us some privacy and some comfort for people. Okay. The proposed plan does not complement our neighborhood. They look like apartments. We would like to have them to become single homes and not these three-story monsters. Okay? When you live on Roland and all your life you've been there and you look across the street and you see the mountains, it might not be nothing to you, but after being in your home for 40-plus years, the mountains bring joy and peace to us. And especially since we're, we have been in this lockdown, not being able to get out and about. This is for a lot of the elderly and believe me, a lot of parents that have to do home teaching. It's wonderful to see the snow on the mountains. Also, we hear there's going to be a new law that comes in that will allow for extra dwelling to be built on the homeowner's property in an area that's already impacted. And also, we know that people will be renting their rooms to others. We live on, I live on a block of 13 homes, six of them are rentals, four of them are either Airbnbs or rent have their houses divided. And there's five to six families, four to five families living in them. There's a lot of cars on our street because they don't have the room to park anywhere. Okay? We have a disaster waiting upon us. Units that are five feet apart, what if a fire starts? That's too close to the other homes and our homes also. Please hear us and read what our emails and our comments have been given to you. This is our community and we are sure many of you do not live close to this project. But we do, and if you did, you would want the best for all and not just for the money. Okay? Okay, that's it. I have a lot more, but everyone else said, basically, but really, please, take the time and be honest with yourselves, be truthful to yourselves and us, and also morally, when you make your decision on this. But we do want this project to be tabled until we can get more information with everybody. Thank you.
And next, we have Lydia in Prey.
Good evening. My neighbors and I agree that we do not like this project as it is currently designed. We reject this project. Firstly, I reject any housing project that replaces a school. And I've made my comments known to the city that I would rather have a community recreation center, such as a park with an aquatic center. However, given that that is not likely, the following are my shared concerns and requests with the neighbors in accordance with our rejections of the current plans.
Excuse me, can you speak closer? I'm sorry.
Oh, speaker?
Thank you, so we can hear you.
Yes. Thank you. Current zoning ordinance calls for eight units per one acre. And as mentioned, they want to change this to 20, then this is far too many. It seems that the only reason is so that the developer can make more money at the expense of the neighborhood. And people who have lived in this area for many years reject this zoning change request. We pay taxes, support the city, vote, and contribute to the upkeep of our neighborhoods. The water that is generated on this site must be contained on-site. It should not be allowed to run into the street and flood it. Roughly five acres of the nine-acre land to be changed is currently grass and trees. And this is five acres of penetrable land being replaced by impenetrable materials. The city should not allow for the applicant to replace such a large number of land with impenetrable materials until after the city has addressed the current flooding issues caused by even low rainfall. And I invite you guys to drive on Roland on Thursday morning after tomorrow's storm and to see what that looks like for us residents. Likewise, the applicant should contain their own water runoff, not allowing it to flood city-owned streets and right-of-way sidewalks, causing for potential falls, accidents, et cetera. According to the California Healthy Places Index, Southern California Public Health Alliance, HPI, safe drinking water indicators for this tract of 91791 homes, my neighbors and I have an indicator score of 9.3 out of 100. And this is quite low. So according to the EPA, water runoff picks up oil and other contaminants, fertilizer, bacteria, and then this goes into lakes and streams and into the ocean. And then we have to untreated. This really contaminates our water. And the HPI indicator I mentioned combines information about 13 contaminants and two types of water quality violations found during drinking water sample testing for my tract. This index was developed by the California Environmental Protection Agency and is included in the CAL Enviro screen. So the water runoff problems only exacerbates this problem. And rather, we reject these plans and request that the applicant explore greener options such as penetrable pavers, pool pavers, green roofs, et cetera. Options such as these will not only alleviate issues with water runoff and contributed contaminants, but it will also contribute to a more greener living environment and help alleviate the heat island effect that this project will contribute to. Again, the applicant is requesting the removal of five acres of penetrable land and they want to put in about 10,000 square feet of common open space. And that is roughly the size of a neighboring, single-family lot. And this is far too small. Some more landscaping, as mentioned. In this area, only 3.2% of the land has tree canopy. And they do plan to install trees, however, it is not sufficient. I reject the proposal of replacing five protected oak trees with 36-inch spock trees. But these are neighborhood trees and, you know, I really enjoy seeing the birds come that get to live there every year and, and have their nests there. So we're removing their habitat at the benefit of the developer being able to put their houses wherever they want them. And then with traffic, there are traffic study flaws. And I address this to Darlene and Ms. Robbins. The ITV Trip Generation Handbook provides data for 19 different categories of residential land use. However, accessible dwelling units were not factored. And in 2020, California changed laws and ADU codes allowing for single-family houses to build and rent out ADUs and junior ADUs. In fact, California Health and Safety Code Section 6558367 requires that cities and counties develop a plan that incentivizes and promotes the creation of ADUs that can be offered at affordable rent for very low to moderate income. So given this, the traffic projections proposed by the applicant are flawed. The city is unprepared with the current infrastructure to take on the amount of traffic that will be generated by this project. Additionally, my neighbors and I do not welcome the addition of the traffic generated by this project. One more thing, very important, the outreach was 300 feet and it was all in English. And we have 55% Hispanic neighborhood and 15.2% Asian. And this outreach assumes that everyone speaks English. I know my neighbors don't all speak English. So not only expand to 1,000 feet, but also expand to other languages.
Good evening. Me and my husband, we live at the historical home that's right across from this school. Our house was built in 1892. Our house is made of cement, decorative, stone, all the walls. Our entire house is made out of the cement bricks. We have lath and plaster ceilings and walls. The last time we had a big construction down Roland is when they replaced all the sewage and repaved the street. And at the time, the big machines that did all that shook our house quite a bit. And so I have some concerns with all the earth movers and the big machinery damaging our house. It's over 100 years old. So I have great concerns on that and also the environmental dust and everything that's big. We have our single-pane windows. We hear all noises. We tried to keep our house historically, the way it was built, we just spent $40,000 recently to redo the roof and had our rafters cut exactly how they were when they built this home. So it's important to us that we keep our home historical as much as we can. We built, we bought our house in 1982. And before that, my husband's father and grandmother lived in that house. So it's been in our, our family for quite a few generations. We think this is our forever home, but we've had recent discussions that if this goes in, we don't know. And we don't want to move because we love this home and we love the view. We have a perfect view of the mountains. And that was one of the things that attracted me about this house and neighborhood. Living on Roland, we listen to that traffic. It is bad. We have, especially now during the COVID, when there's not as much traffic right now and the people that speed down our streets, they're not doing 40 miles an hour. And we've listened to motorcycles, pop wheelies all the way down. It is, it is pretty bad. We walk our dog every night and we listen to these cars race up and down our street. And that's now without the traffic. Once school gets in, it is hard to even get out of my driveway because you've got Roland Elementary, you've got Traywick, and you've got Covina High, and everybody's trying to get their kids to school. I can't even get out of my driveway. I work for the school. I work for Covina Valley School District, I'm an aide. And so I got to get at my job, the same time everybody's getting their kids. And now you're going to put over 500 people, just close your eyes and think of your house, and now 500 people are going to move in across the street. And then you're going to tell me that the traffic is not significant? You know, how can that possibly be? It's going to be significant. When Pioneer was an adult school, the traffic coming out of there, there's an opening in the median. And then the opening that you have the horseshoe driveway, and when they would come out, I guarantee you, there's probably one to two accidents a month because people don't know how to navigate coming across Roland, looking for the traffic that's going west and then try navigate the traffic that's coming east. And there's accidents, they end up in our neighbors' front yards all the time. So I have a concern that if this happens, you know, where are they going to have the outlet for the driveways? Because everything's going to be dumped onto Roland. And then to get to my house, I have to make a U-turn where Home Rest is. And I can't tell you how many times I almost get rear-ended just because I have to slow down, make the U-turn and come back up Roland to get to my house. And now you're going to put all that traffic and what are people going to be doing in the morning? They're going to try to get on Azusa to go on the freeway. They're going to come down Roland, make the same U-turn to get up onto Azusa and then get on the freeway. It's going to be a nightmare. I don't oppose to some homes being built there. This is just too many. It's just too many for that size of a lot. And it will impact everybody who lives in that area. So I would just want you to really consider, you know, think of your own home and now imagine over 500 people moving across the street from you and what would it be like in your neighborhood? So I just want to leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Good evening. I came here tonight because my neighbors and I agree that we do not like the project as it is currently designed. And here are some reasons. Right now, the zoning ordinance calls for eight units per acre. The developers want the zoning ordinance changed to now we're hearing up to 20 units per acre. This is too many. It greatly impacts my neighbors and me. And we're people who have lived in the neighborhood for many years. We pay taxes, we support the city, we vote, and we contribute to the upkeep of our neighbors, our neighborhoods. You've heard from many, many people how that, how this whole project will impact their lives. And it's so many people, 500 people into such a small area. Heard from the woman who gave the report about mitigated impact. And that's just not true. 500 people may be only 1% of West Covina. But if you have those 500 people in one nine-acre spot, that is quite a different story. It's going to impact it. It's not spread out over the whole city. We don't want parking facing Roland Avenue. It will look bad. The parking should be put inside the complex. There needs to be more landscaping. Not only is this pleasing to look at, but it helps to absorb some of the rainwater. Without landscaping, the water will run into the street and flood it. We want broader outreach from the site. Change it from 300 feet to 600 feet. This type of a project affects many people who otherwise may not be informed as to what if, what is being proposed. We don't want the trash cans on the street. This will look terrible. We want communal trash enclosures in the development so that nobody sees the trash cans from the street. We want each unit to have three parking spaces to allow sufficient street parking for the neighborhood. Finally, we ask that this project be tabled to allow the developer and the community to work together. Individual meetings are not helpful. Ideally, we would like to have it tabled until the COVID pandemic has subsided. Our goal is to improve the overall community. Right now, we are giving up an awful lot and we are getting nothing in return. Thank you.
Thank you, honorable members and staff. First, I wish to express my appreciation for the opportunity to address the planning committee on behalf, on my behalf and that of many of my concerned neighborhood, neighbors who could not attend this evening. You may be aware that a petition signed by the residents of the streets adjacent to the proposed development was submitted to the planning department as well as to the mayor's office and to each member of the city council. The comments related to the proposed design as well as our collective concern over the concessions requested by the developer of the specific plan have been provided in detail in the aforementioned petition. Tonight, my objective is not to, to sit here and try to tell you what to do, as you were earlier done. No, my objective in speaking to this body is to appeal to your better judgment and your sense of duty as you consider authorizing this project. I would like to invite you, please, to ask yourselves, as you look at that plan, as you look at that in front of you, how would you like to have your neighborhood's population nearly tripled all of a sudden? Would you be concerned over the environmental impact such a change is bound to have in your neighborhood? Certainly, we do not aim to stop the city from doing its part in trying to meet the need for housing and to expand the tax benefits that are needed for the city to thrive and to prosper. However, this particular development encompasses too many negative aspects that must not be ignored. It is clear that the developer's only focus is to maximize profits by overbuilding the project site and to do so under the city's patronage. How? By seeking excessive concessions of the city's existing regulations. As proposed, this project is, is really short-sighted. As proposed, this project is really short-sighted. If you carefully study the proposed plans, you will see that for the sake of profit, it neglects to provide for the physical and emotional needs of its intended residents. The design is not appealing, nor does it promote a sense of pride or of ownership. It is bland and transitory and more akin to a mega apartment complex. And with all due respect, it looks like one of those extended stay Americas if you really look at it. The only appeal that this will have is to investors who wish to have multiple rental units, not to homeowners who may wish to remain a part of the community for decades, as the overwhelming majority of us have. I bought my house on Leaf Avenue in 1999. My first house I bought on Lark Ellen in 1997. My first buyer experience was with West Covina. I love the city. But this threatens that. Our neighborhood is peaceful and successful because it has been afforded a measure of privacy, which these prospective residents will not enjoy in that complex if it is approved as proposed. So we kindly appeal to you and request that the developer be required to provide more landscape throughout the entire project. 15 to 20 feet side and rear setbacks, a minimum of 25 to 30 feet in the front yard setback to provide curb appeal, adequate space to install even their proposed monument, and to eliminate, as it's been mentioned, the front parking. The matter of the trash is major. Think of all the garbage that will be produced by all those residents. They expect to have them in the garage? What about pickup day? We're going to see that trash in those tiny little aisles you see there. It'll be lined with trash cans. Additionally, water runoff. Look at all the concrete. Look at all the driveway. There's no greenery. Water runoff can be better managed when more green space is provided. In general, I have no doubt that you will agree that happy neighborhoods are made up of happy, satisfied homeowners. Please, try to envision the proposed complex through the eyes of a potential buyer and ask yourself, would you invest in that project, in that complex? If you did, how long would you actually live there? Would you be satisfied with the purchase? Or would you get buyer's remorse rather quickly? Is the developer selling a product that is needed? Or is he taking advantage of the housing crisis to manipulate the city? Your decision is paramount. It will either preserve or permanently disturb the quality of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening, and good evening, chair members of the planning commission, staff, members of the community. And thank you, Joanne, for the wonderful presentation. It was very detailed, so I appreciate that. I'm Tommy here tonight to oppose the project as well. Not that I want to make it very clear, not that I'm opposed to residential project being developed at the site, but I do oppose that the development is the way it is designed, its layout. I don't think it's going to be conducive to a project that will stand the test of time. I did submit a letter on December 21st related to the mitigated negative declaration. And in that letter, I outlined certain architectural and deficiencies, as I will call them, in the design. Some of those, the old walls should be decorative, and they should be not precision block, but all double, split face on both sides. To increase the setback, like many of the other speakers also stated, they're only providing seven and a half feet of separation. That is not adequate. We need greater buffers to plant trees, mature landscaping, provide more privacy, attenuate noise. And if it was a single-family residential home, like they were built before, they were five feet at least. This is just single-family homes. This is multifamily. So they should provide a wider setback. Parking lot in the front, really? The municipal code doesn't allow that for the multifamily residential developments. It doesn't allow parking to be located in the front. So why would we be allowing it here? It looks horrible from the presentation to Roland. And also to the parking. When you look at the... Oh, where the parking is located, it's going to be totally visible from Roland, not what you want to see in a community. Many mentioned about the trash, how the trash is being handled. I will suggest that trash enclosures be provided throughout the development. That's more adequate for multifamily. It could be once, pick up once or twice a week. The multifamily doesn't really blend very well with the single families, like two different projects in one. They should be more cohesive. In addition, the developer is asking for a lot of deviations, what we call concessions, without any community benefit. They're proposing $150,000. I think it should propose, it should provide affordable housing, even if it's at the moderate income. That should be in exchange for everything that he's asking and not giving anything Some concern with the specific plan that I want to note is that it allows for height up to 45 feet. The plan show height of 36 and a half for those three-story townhomes. But if the project is sold, the next person can come and ask for 45 feet in height. That should not be allowed. Way excessive. Additionally, there's other things that were not mentioned in the specific plan is that the general plan also calls for... Actually called for a division of the general plan also called for preserving the stable residential neighborhoods where no significant changes in line use are expected over the next 22 years. And the goal is to maintain the character of these areas. The same goal can be found under Part Two, "Our Well-Planned Community," at the beginning of page 43 of the general plan. So these policies of the general plan have always been to redirect the growth in downtown, in the downtown area, and along the adjacent major corridors, which is Sunset Avenue, Glendora Avenue, and North Azusa Avenue. This is not one of those corridors. And many people talked about the recycled water. One of the actions also too under the general plan, Policy 1.5, talks about minimizing runoff pollution and to incorporate base management practices, which include providing more landscaping. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you tabled this item and allow the applicant to work with the residents to have a better design project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christian Perez. Let's see. Christian? I will come back. Thomas Crisser?
Hello. Now, my concerns, they've already been brought up, all of them. Parking, you need at least three to four spaces per unit. Otherwise, you are going to have all those cars parked on Roland because they have nowhere else to go. The overcrowding is ridiculous. You have 73 homes in the aforementioned, and they're single-family. And you want to triple that in less space? The overcrowding, that's just going to create nothing but problems. The traffic, you have two outlets to this place within 100 feet of a major intersection. There's going to be no way anyone can get out of there safely or in if they have to make a left turn and cross. Green space, there's no green space. They haven't made enough room for any green space. They're taking away nine acres of green space and giving back nothing. And trash enclosures, they definitely should be having to put trash enclosures in rather than two cans in the driveways. Those are basically my... And also, my concern is the, why is there a need to change the zoning? It's zoned for single-family. Why aren't they just putting single-family homes in? There should be no need to change the zoning on this. It's already zoned for single-family. Those are my concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amelia?
Good evening. I have lived on the Eileen Cul-de-sac for over 23 years and enjoy the peaceful neighborhood with the children and family living as homeowners. This is an established neighborhood with longstanding residents who pay taxes and want to maintain a decent and quiet neighborhood. I am concerned with the proposed development of 158 units, as everybody else has reiterated this, with the fact that we are concerned with the noise, the pollution, and the traffic that it may create. I hope that these are not low-income units with the conceptual landscape master plan that seem to have so many units with very little space and yards for visitor parking, which traffic and cars can overflow on Roland Street. I understand the environmental impact has been prepared, though it wasn't recently available on the city website. I don't know if that's available now. And again, the traffic study has been, is also a main concern. With the zoning change, will the existing homeowners be impacted with additional taxes or additional assessments such as sewer lines added, flood control, et cetera? My main concern, again, is the not allowing the Eileen Street or the remaining cul-de-sacs to be used as an emergency exit for these units. I'm really concerned about that because I live on Eileen Street. And again, we have children that are in the area. People walk on the streets because we don't have any sidewalks, and we enjoy the quietness. But I cannot understand how a fire truck or ambulance walking, going through our streets at this, in this neighborhood is going to be very destructive. So please consider that as far as using Eileen Street as an emergency exit. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we're going to go back to Christian Perez. Is she or he still here? If not, we'll conclude all the speaker, that's all the speaker cards. Does anyone else want to come up and speak? Anyone else new that's come to speak? If not, I'm sorry, I think... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hold on.
Ultimately, you know, as much as I'd love to give everyone all the time in the world to speak to us, unfortunately, if we allow people to speak out, I think it inappropriately prejudices everyone else who has spoken and abided by the five-minute rule.
Thank you. So we're going to have the applicant to rebut. The applicant, is he still here? Come on up. Thank you. If you can address some of our residents' concern?
Yes, and thank you. Some of these we addressed in the presentation, and others, we have not. So I'll touch on a handful of those. First, I know the trash enclosures came up in a couple of circumstances. One thing I want to emphasize is that, you know, we have made space for receptacles in the garage. And, you know, putting the centralized enclosures, I mean, everybody talked about concerns with the apartment look. I mean, that's one of those things that, you know, really does kind of convey that apartment look when you have dumpsters, you know, centrally located in these projects. I mean, this is a single-family project. And again, we will have an HOA here. I know, you know, I live in a project that does not have an HOA, and I understand the concerns when you have trash receptacles that are left out, you know, for a day or two days. You know, one thing that's really nice about the homeowners association is that they have regulations where they can enforce that. So you don't have, you know, trash receptacles just sitting out there that aren't returned to the garage. And they also can't be taken out early. You know, they have to be kept within a tight timeframe. So that's an important consideration. There was a question about increasing the wall from six feet to seven or eight feet. And that is something we have looked at in multiple locations, and we are certainly open to increasing it to, I think, seven feet is probably a good height, particularly on that side, on the west, on the east side, I'm sorry. You start to get an eight-foot wall, and it will start to look like a prison block. I mean, I don't know how many of you have seen an eight-foot wall, but it's pretty imposing. But certainly, and I had spoken with Ms. Perez a couple of times, and that's something that we had talked about might be, you know, a good solution for those applications. There was some talk about the vegetation on site. I mean, there will be over 200 trees planted with this project. And, you know, trees are far better pollinators, air purifiers, you know, the roots are far more effective. Right now, what's out there aside from the handful of trees is turf grass. I mean, that's, turf is not valuable. It's compacted. It requires mowing, fertilization. It doesn't offer any pollinization whatsoever. And, you know, ultimately, it gets so compacted, the water generally sheets right off of that. So, you know, it's not really a favorable comparison when you look at, you know, the turf and asphalt that's out there today. The, although you may not see the expanse of vegetation pocket or, you know, the area that's covered by the turf now, that'll be far more beneficial and a variety of plant materials that, again, they offer a lot more environmental benefit. There were some discussions about the water infiltration. Again, that is something we've been very conscious of with the design from the onset. We looked at, you know, what we could do with that water that was coming off of the commercial site to the north of us. Because right now, it's just charging, you know, right through a pipe and shooting down. Some of it's outletting there on Pioneer with the balance going down onto Roland. So again, what we're doing is intercepting that flow, metering it out, the same thing that we're doing on the intract. So we've separated the off-site storm drain from the onsite storm drain. And underneath those parking aisles, we're putting in infiltration pipe, which will slow the water, allow some of it to infiltrate, and make sure that we're not adding to the issue and certainly not making it worse than it is today. We're improving the condition that now exists in the relationship between this project or this site and Roland Avenue. A couple of questions on parking. I just want to emphasize that, you know, we are providing two covered spaces for each unit and then 99 additional spaces on site. That exceeds the city requirements. So in terms of there being overflow parking or bleed out, I mean, we're providing in excess of what would be required by the city in excess of what would be required, uh, by the city standards. In addition to that, again, uh, the HOA is a good mechanism, uh, for these. We have a number of projects where we've implemented, uh, parking standards and, you know, right down to the letter where that there are inspections done on the garages. And that's something that the homeowners have to agree to. It's not something they could say, well, I'm not going to have my garage inspected or I'm going to do what I want with my garage. They get fined. You know, there are penalties associated with non-compliance. So these are things that are enforceable. They aren't just things that we talk about. These are things that happen, you know, each and every day in common interest communities. And they're effective because they have enforcement behind them. Again, I just want to, the, the parking was the other one. I just, you know, if you look at the distribution of parking and where we have our landscaping, there will be a lot of buffers between the parking as you're looking through the site and the layers of landscaping that will interrupt each one of those, including, as I mentioned earlier, the diamond pockets within incorporated into all of those parking areas in addition to what's in front of them as you move your way up through, uh, the community site there. And lastly, I know there was, you know, a couple of questions about, well, why can't you just do single family, you know, detached homes? Again, we're adjacent to a, a commercial, uh, site on the east side of that property. And very candidly, it's, it's not particularly attractive. I mean, there's, there's some challenges over there right now that I think we all recognize. There's homeless, there's a couple of those businesses that are, that probably were struggling already and are struggling more with COVID and, and, um, you know, that's, it's just not a ideal compatible use for having just a traditional single family, uh, home community up against that. So we work through the transitions of density, uh, with the three-story townhomes over on that side only. And then we transition to the single family, uh, cluster style, two-story, uh, on the west side of the property. And again, transitioning density and intensity of use. And, uh, you know, I believe that's an effective, uh, transition there. And, and the other thing is it's just economic viability, you know, that you only get a few number of houses on that site. And, you know, the, the school district owns this property. Obviously, they're going to be able to inject these funds back into the district, back into other programs. And if this, you know, project isn't economically, you know, viable for them, I don't know what the other alternatives are. Uh, but yeah, that, a, a low density project, I know there were some other examples that were, that were cast out there with, you know, a significant reduction in the number of homes. It really just comes, comes down to, uh, the economic viability of the site. I'm available for any other questions you may have.
I have, I have a question. Um, can you talk about, uh, I have a couple of different questions, but the first question I have is, um, can you talk a little about, a little, a little bit about um, how this project will increase home values of what the surrounding houses around the property? That do, do you believe that the, the values of homes adjacent to this property will increase because of a, a, a project of this size?
You know, it's certainly, you know, speculation on, on my part. There are, there are larger lots surrounding the property. But these are going to be new homes with all of the latest, uh, you know, advancements. And, you know, somebody talked about air conditioning noise uh, earlier, which, you know, these, the newer projects, they have variable speed compressors and things of that nature. They're so much quieter than, you know, anything that most of us have on our homes today. Uh, but a lot of the builders are putting in, you know, very connected homes, lots of features. Um, you know, we just, I just finished a project over, over in Pomona, uh, that's, uh, a, a high density alternative to surrounding uh, single family detached homes. And people are, are purchasing new homes over the surrounding homes purely because they want a new home that's really trinky, has all of the, the latest technology and furnishings and fittings. It's something they can walk into and it's there. You know, are, are we going to, um, drive up the, the home prices? I mean, I, that would be, you know, speculation on my part, but I, I think it's going to be beneficial to have, you know, a, a new project, you know, there and maybe inject some, some life into some of the commercial opportunities nearby as well.
Great. And I know the, the landscaping plan right there, uh, and the one we got too, shows a lot of new trees going in there. And I also see the, the bushes on the left of the property. The bush walls are going up. Now, on the, on the, what street is that? On Eileen Street. Right now, it has, it's going to be brick wall right there and it'll be grass in front of it.
There will be plant material. So are you talking about in the bulb with the cul-de-sac? Yeah, so we will plant that with shrubs and trees. Uh, so it's not just a stark wall. That entire area will be planted, uh, with plant material. It won't be, won't be turf, won't be something, you know, high maintenance uh, like that, but there will be, uh, shrubs and other perennial plant material and trees there.
Now, is it, is it possible that, um, what's, what's this? What's the, what's the, what's the bushes called on, on, that you're using on the wall?
So along the, the wall, the buffer we're proposing, it's called a potocarpus.
Okay.
And that is a, a very dense, uh, bushy evergreen, uh, plant material. It actually will grow up to 25, 30 feet high if you let it. As I said, we're going to keep it compact through the homeowners association's maintenance obligation. It's a separate, uh, area that they are required to maintain. Uh, it won't be, uh, subject to individual maintenance by the, by the property owners that's adjacent because obviously you'd end up with, you know, a lack of uniformity or, or no maintenance at all.
Uh, yeah. And I, I think it's, uh, I mean, just as an idea, I think, um, I think it might be a good idea to actually bring, if that is, if it's possible, extend that into that quarter sack area. So there's like a solid, um, separation from the brick wall. And when residents, I know residents before used to be able to see a, a clear gate and, and scooggrass. And I think it'll, it'll be uh, architecturally beautified, uh, if, if that bush could go into that Eileen area, extend into that area. But that's just an idea and, and not, not a direction, but.
No, that's not a bad, I mean, that would accomplish a couple of things. Obviously, we'd get a vertical element that's blocking the starkness of that wall there in the cul-de-sac. So that's certainly something we can look at extending. It's going to be maintained uh, by the association under the, the same program.
Yeah, and I think it'll make the, the houses on that street, I think it'll, it'll make that end really beautiful. So, yeah, thank you.
Also, can you explain some of the, since we're talking about that particular cul-de-sac, um, some of the residents seems to think that the emergency gate or, or access, how and when will they be using those gates?
That will be for emergency vehicles only. So in the event of, uh, uh, fire, ambulance, uh, that would be the only, only time those would be utilized. So it's, it's purely for emergency vehicles to gain access in the event, you know, of a fire or, or some other, uh, extraordinary event. Uh, you know, they come by for periodic testing, those types of things. But otherwise, that would be restricted only to emergency vehicles.
So would you say that for the most part, they're going to use the existing Roland, uh, the two Roland axes? And then when would they use the last one, which is the third axis?
The, the project would be, um, accessed only from Roland, the two access points on Roland. So there would no, be no access through the community to the north.
Because I just wanted to hear is that if someone called from that community and an ambulance comes by, do they prefer to use two of those axes first before they use the, the third cul-de-sac area? Or do they go through the cul-de-sac area and not the other two?
No, if it's an ambulance, it's going to be at their discretion or whatever they feel they can get to the, you know, to the, uh, person the fastest. That, that, but that won't be, um, the private owners either from the community or, uh, in the adjacent community. That will be restricted. Uh, there will be a lockbox, uh, access only for emergency vehicles, but really that would be at the discretion of the emergency personnel.
So there is going to be a lockbox at that location. So the fireman or the emergency person need to come down out of his truck or van or car, whatever it is that he's driving. He had to get the key, unopen the gate and then open up the gate and then go in.
Yeah, that's per their, that's per their standard. That's, that's, uh, that's a common application.
Okay.
Projects.
So how often do they use, I, I guess, I mean, it seems like it's a hassle. If you have to open up the lockbox and then get the key and then open up the gate and then try to get in as fast as you can, wouldn't it be easier to go through the other two gates that's not locked?
I guess, I mean, the, I've seen it happen on communities and, you know, and the firemen jump out of there, they're on that thing in, in seconds. So, I mean, they're, they're trained for that. This is, again, this is, this is not a unique, uh, application. This is something we see on projects, uh, throughout, uh, California.
I see. Thank you. I guess, um, I have another question regarding trash. It seems like our resident seems to think that the trash is putting out in the street in Roland. Can you explain a little bit and get into details about the trash and the trash can and on a trash day?
Yeah, and, and again, I, I, um, you know, the, the trash would not be allowed to go out onto Roland. I mean, that simply would not be um, uh, one of the potential options for these owners. So the, the two options, uh, likely, and, and these are often at the discretion of, I, I believe Athens is the provider, uh, here in the city. But, you know, some of the, some of the trucks are willing to actually, um, uh, go in and back out of the motor courts. And others require, uh, that they are pulled out to the, to the main thoroughfare. But they would have to be pulled out the, you know, the night before and then taken in the day of. So they're not things that are going to be staying out there, uh, for days on end. And like I said, in some cases, the, um, the Athens trucks or, or the other, uh, service providers, they actually will go into the cul-de-sacs and, or into the, uh, auto courts and then back, uh, back out again. So it's really at, at their discretion. But under no circumstances would there be trash receptacles pulled out to Roland.
So as I understand it correctly, the trash container will be in each individual unit?
That's correct, in the garage. That's correct.
And then on the trash day, they'll pull out and put it somewhere close to the garage? Is that?
It'll either be out of the garage or pulled out to the, to the main thoroughfare. Those would be one of the two.
Inside, inside the, the community.
Right, inside the community.
But can you use your laser and point it to which street that the trash can is going to be in so that our neighbors would know where?
So, so this, it would be either in this main aisle here or into the, into the little auto courts. One of those two options would be where the, uh, trash receptacles would be, uh, pulled out again the night before and then taken in the day of. I mean, it's really not going to be, that, that's pretty much how every neighborhood works. That's, that's not unique to, to this site. The benefit you would have here is you have enforcement. People can't leave their, uh, their, uh, trash receptacles just out here staying, uh, you know, overnight for, for multiple days like we see in a lot of neighborhoods without the, uh, uh, community association.
So you're trying to tell us that the trash can will be right next to the each unit when they pull out of the garage?
It will either be next to their units or they will be pulled out to the main drive aisle.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else has questions?
Would this project be similar to the one you just completed in Pomona?
No, this is, this is a very different project. The only, the only similarity I was drawing was just in that cluster type where um, there's a higher density next to existing, uh, projects, uh, and, and homes, older homes that are single family detached. So that's the, that's the relationship. But the actual product here is different.
Now, my understanding and looking at your plans for the, um, single family detached condos, they're going to be 25 feet or 27 and a half feet in height?
They, there are a couple of different elevations, um, that, so there'll be some that are at the 25 and some that are at, I think, 26, 7. Uh, but yeah, that will be the, the threshold for those.
Okay. And then for the townhouses where you have the five or the six-plex, they all range anywhere from what, 40 and a half?
They're like 37, I believe, up to around just over 40, like 40 foot six inches.
Okay. When I looked at the tentative track map, I noticed that there are some great differences to handle drainage. And it looked like, um, the properties to the west and to the north, that there may be a rise in the pad from anywhere from two feet to three feet. So if the single family detached units are 25 feet or 27 or 26, then it's going to be an additional two or three feet higher, correct?
Well, we're going to, we're going to grade the site. So it'll, this site is very, very flat, uh, overall in its, in its finished condition. So there won't be much, uh, change in elevation, uh, in the product. But yeah, that, that measurement that I'm giving you, of course, is from grade.
Okay, okay. Had you, when you guys looked at the surrounding neighborhood and considering the size of the site being 9.14 acres, had you looked at, um, any other types of multiple family developments for that site?
You know, we looked at other, other product types. They were, they were similar. They were other, you know, cluster style. We looked at some others that had other attached, uh, product as well. You know, the threshold that we were keeping within is that, you know, 100, 158, uh, units. And I know the density's been thrown around as, as being as much as 20 here. It's not, it's not 20, it's 17 plus. Um, but yeah, we did look at, at a number of different, uh, products here. And we thought this was just the, the best fit. And again, I can't stress enough what we're doing. Normally, when you're going into an infill opportunity like this, and this truly is an infill, and we're surrounded by, you know, varying product on all sides, you know, it's very difficult to try to get a product to blend and make the transition, at least purposefully, in those infill locations. It's obviously easy once you have a, a blank slate to work with. But this is what you would do. I mean, you would have, uh, in fact, the only thing different you might have in this location is maybe apartments up next to the uh, commercial as a, as a transition. Whereas here, you know, again, we didn't think that was a, an appropriate fit. But, you know, the, the attached townhomes, uh, makes a, a good transition. Then we go into something less dense in the, the detached cluster homes. And then you transition into your single family, traditional single family neighborhood.
How much are the condos going for? On average, about?
You know, that, I, I always hate to, um, hate to speculate on, speculate on where prices, um, will, will settle out once things are, are open. Um, but I think upper fours, low fives for the, for the towns, uh, starting uh, up to probably the mid 600s for the, um, for the clusters.
Can I ask why the zoning, a resident asked why the zoning had to change?
Well, we, we processed a specific plan. But I mean, the, what I spoke about earlier is just the single family, uh, home, you know, just was not a viable fit for this location. I mean, for a number of factors. One, the, the physical presence to, uh, the adjacent, uh, use, uh, on the, uh, east side, uh, the commercial. But then just economic viability. There's just not, you just can't, uh, drive the, the value up high enough with single family, uh, detached, at least not in a traditional, uh, configuration and still have a viable project.
Aren't condos and townhomes still, uh, zoned residential?
Yeah.
So what, what is the, what would be the zoning? I mean, is that, instead of a?
We did zone of a, of a specific plan as opposed to the, uh, the, the single family that would have otherwise, you know, potentially occupied this site. R1.
Sorry. Um, quite a few residents had mentioned regarding the drainage. Can you, um, you had mentioned that some of the mitigations will be taken into considerations while you're building it. And you had mentioned that it's going to be under the parking area. When you said mitigations, can you elaborate a little bit more about that?
When I'm talking about mitigations, I'm mostly just talking about what's happening right now. On this, on this site, there are a couple of problems. There's a, a lot of flow that comes off this property up here to the north. Right now, it comes down through, moves down through this area. There's a, there's a flooding condition that happens here. And then the water, then the water comes down and creates another flooding condition down here. We're intercepting that water here in the cul-de-sac. And then running it down through the project. And we're implementing some, uh, basins here, uh, to intercept that and meter the water out. One of the reasons why we have parking over here in the front of the, uh, property as well is that's one of the areas where we're putting in the underground, uh, for the, for the separate intract, uh, storm drain system. So that we can run the, run the underground, uh, units here and also have some infiltration, uh, and also have some infiltration, uh, pipe in those areas. And that, what that will do, it's corrugated, and that will allow the water basically to slow down. So it's not just shooting across the stry, the site and dumping out onto Roland. It's basically getting metered out, and we're drawing it out so that it's, you know, released over a 48-hour period. And that way, you're past the storm event, and it's not, you know, creating, I, I've, I've seen what one of the residents was, uh, talking about uh, earlier this year, where, you know, the water already gets up close to the top of the curb on, on Roland. So that's not a condition, obviously, we're, we're contributing to. That's an existing, uh, condition, uh, that's out there on, on Roland as it stands today.
I'm trying to understand still, um, in terms of how, um, how the water and how you're gonna get it down to the street, below the street level. I mean, is there like a, a tank or some sort of...
Yeah, so it's underground, it's underground pipe, like 60-inch pipe that goes underneath those, uh, parking areas. That's exactly...
I'm sorry, how wide?
Like, it'll be like 60-inch pipe that goes underneath there.
16 inches pipe?
60, yeah.
60?
They're large.
5 feet?
Large. So they have capacity to store water and allow infiltration as it moves through, moves through the site from, uh, north to south.
So you're basically taking all the water on the surface, basically have it the 6 feet, or 5 feet, 60 inches, it's 5 feet tall? What do you call those things? I completely forgot. Pipe, concrete, pipe, down underground, so the water can sit there and slowly flow? Is it a pump system, a gravity, uh, system that's...
It's a gravity system. And then there's also a system that will occur, uh, in the, uh, parking area there on the front. That'll be a, a switchback of chambers that also, again, provide the same, uh, water, water retention, so that we're just not having the, the sheet flow.
So would that take care of all, um, would you, I don't know if your hydrologists have been done the study to see if that will take care of all the... I'm not sure if it's "all" is the right term, um, with a development site, and also for the existing water flow currently. I mean, after development, will you continue to see a lot of water, like the...
I mean, we're gonna improve, you know, we're gonna improve what's happening now. So the, it'll be better than the pre-development condition that exists today. What I can't tell you is that it's going to make what you see out on Roland, uh, better, because I, I have, I have a feeling that Roland has a problem independent of this, uh, project. And being that we're gonna be contributing less volume i- in a storm event to Roland, it should only improve things. Whether that's gonna be a visible improvement, you know, I, I can't communicate that to you. But there will be less water that's being contributed into Roland during a storm event than there is now, as the site stands in its, in its current condition.
I have, I have a question, but can we call for like a 5-minute break? I have to use the restroom.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you guys mind calling for a 5-minute break?
All right, we'll take a 5-minute break for now. Does anyone has a white minivan parking at the parking lot right now? If you have a white minivan, um, I, we need to, um, we need your help to adjust your car a little bit, so, uh, one of our residents can go back home, please.
We...
I'll go stand by the door. I'll stand outside, block the women from going in.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
No.
Now, right.
Okay, thank you everyone, and thanks for the break. So we're gonna continue our, um, meetings. So please take your seats and... Okay, does anyone else has, um, questions for our applicant?
Yes, I have.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Great. Uh, so, on, so, um, do you believe it'll be, um, do you believe there'll be any financial burden if you were willing to, as an idea, uh, include some of those, uh, to include the, um, the bushy walls in, in that quarter stack area?
Well, I think we could, I think that's, that's a, um, I think that's a realistic solution there. And for two things, I think the city actually has a, a standing, um, requirement of some of the walls we cover with IV or something. So I think that'll accomplish that same goal, only with what I think is much better plant material.
Okay, perfect. And then the second one is, um, I know some of the residents were concerned about the parking right in front on, uh, Roland. And I think, um, I think a possible solution can be, uh, adding some, uh, I think they call it he- he- hedge, uh, like a small, like a 3-foot hedge, uh, bushes right there? Is that something that's possible as well?
Yeah, I think we, I think we have room there, and that, that whole frontage is gonna be maintained also by the homeowner association.
Yeah.
So we could certainly incorporate some additional, uh, plant material along that front as a buffer.
Okay, great.
I'm making, I'm making note of that.
Perfect.
Um, go ahead, Nick.
Sure. I, I also had some, some questions regarding the, uh, the, the parking area and, and, uh, wanted to get a little bit of insight into your thought processes as to why that one area is the only area where there is a parking lot on the main street. So, so if you can give me a little bit of insight into, into the why behind that, it, it is unusual relative to the rest of the project.
I mean, honestly, the, the original solution for the storm drain was to bring the storm drain down there. This site is so flat.
Right.
So that was where we were, uh, putting the pipes in to, uh, capture, uh, the drainage. That turned out not to be enough, which is why we now have pipes running up the, uh, western driveway and underneath those parking stalls as well. That was really, you know, one of the, one of the critical drivers. I mean, the water obviously needs to come down and be captured at that lower location. But being, uh, how flat this site is and getting everything to drain and not contribute, uh, to the problem out on Roland, that was really the, the best solution our engineer, uh, came up with.
Got it. So, so, so for example, it, it wouldn't be possible to basically flip where the, uh, I, I think that's, that's a, that's a five-plex there? Flip the five-plex and, and put it, you know, street adjacent as opposed to where the, the parking, uh, currently is?
Yeah, right. No, we, that's, in terms of hydrology, it just wasn't working, uh, with that configuration.
Okay, all right, understood.
But I, but I do think there's some things we can do, uh, with vegetation to, to soften that, um, as you're going by, uh, the frontage there, so that it's, uh, mitigated even further, at least visually.
Understood. And then on the, uh, on, on the north, uh, on the north and the, and the eastern sides, um, I, I, I had a question. Those are, it looks like they're, they're drawn as, as just 6-foot walls that are adjacent to the, uh, um, to the, uh, commercial sites there. Um, quite, quite frankly, I, I have, I have some concerns about that being a, 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 just, just given the, I think there's a, there's an access point for, for, uh, memory searching, right? Like an alley back there. Um, I, I, I have some concerns about the viability of just a 6-foot wall there. Um, and the fact, the fact is, it doesn't look like there's any, uh, um, there, there's any screening or anything like that there either. Um, I, I, I was curious if, if, if you guys would consider putting, you know, at least a 7-foot wall there? Um, or potentially looking at, uh, at, and potentially looking at putting screening there. I don't, I don't know if that's possible with the, with the very limited setbacks that are there. Um, can, can you tell me just a little bit more? What is the setback there?
Yeah, I think we can accomplish that. Um, I think we can accomplish that. When you're talking about screening, you're, you're talking about some type of vegetation material?
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you could, you could do the, uh, the, the, the porticarpus that's, uh, that's like on the, uh, the, the north. Uh, I believe that's the northwestern and the, uh, and the western side. But I, I, quite frankly, I think it would, it would go more for uniformity if, if it's, uh, if it surrounds the entirety of the, of the, uh, of the site. Um, and, and quite frankly, um, with regard to that commercial area, um, you probably want... at least in that area in particular, you probably wanna have taller fencing. I mean, just a, as a, as a practical matter.
I don't necessarily disagree with you. One, one thing that we did incorporated into the last round of the specific plan, because it originally was, uh, only, uh, allowing a six-foot wall was to increase that. So, I would agree with you. And again, that was something I just, in talking to some of the surrounding neighbors even, uh, over the last couple of weeks, you know, they were worried about the number of people that hop that fence over there and then traverse across the property. So, we, we could, we could certainly look at increasing that wall to, to seven feet along that entire boundary. And that, that entire wall is gonna come out. Um, I did reach out to the, uh, the retail, uh, commercial property owner there. I mean, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but those ficus trees that are, uh, up next to that, not only are they an absolute mess and buckling everything over there, but they are starting to press on that wall. So, we're, uh, going to take that entire stretch out so we can, we can replace that with a seven-foot wall instead of a six-foot wall.
Some of the neighbors had, um, that live right next to the property, um, also have concern regarding the walls and they do want it to raise up higher. Because six-foot, because some of these development in an, um, a gated community, a lot of time I've seen that they have, um, taller walls. So, is there any way that you can address that issues, um, and, and, and help them? I, I understand that, you know, sometimes that, the height of the wall and it depend, I mean, if I'm five feet, I'm not gonna see my neighbors. But there are some people, you yourself probably can't see, look over the neighbors. But anyway, um, I was wondering if you can address some of the neighbors' issues? Because there are a lot of Zoom calls and some of the neighbors tonight here has a lot of concern regarding the walls. That, um, looking into their properties, that they're so used to not having neighbors in the past. So, if you can perhaps increase all the neighbor areas to eight foot. So, this way, you know, it takes care of all the issues that the neighbors are really concerned about. And the other thing is that the drainage, I understand that you, parking, parking on the front, it seems like, it, it, it seems like the neighbors do not like the parking up in the front because it looks more like a commercial. Now, in terms of drainage, you have a park in the back. Can you lift, shift all your building to the front and then have that parking right where the building was at? Like, reverse it. And can you, you know, hydrology, sometimes you can use pump and what have you to take care of your mitigations regarding your drainage and the water issues. If that works for the neighbors and if that makes them, you know, that they don't wanna see it like a commercial instead of a residential area. So, that's something that, and I don't think fully, a lot of the neighbors are complaining about the drainage and the issues there. I personally have not seen that because I don't live there, but I have seen that when there is inundated with water, you can hydroplane when you're driving on Roland. So, that's can be a scary, um, issue. But if you're taking care of that, also, I don't think the neighbors, maybe you should address this concerns to the neighbors is that they don't, they may not know that you are mitigating by putting a five-foot pipe underground where the driveway is to take care of all that water or at least all the development water going there and some from the property, commercial property to the north. That's something that the neighbor needs to understand because otherwise, they just think that you're just building a bunch of houses on here. Versus not, and then you're just making a whole bunch more water because it's all concrete. It is true. It looks like it's all concrete. But if you're telling the neighbors that you're taking underground and you have a park, you can actually put a lot of water under that park as well. I don't know what the hydrology does, but they can actually put a lot of pipe and what have you.
Yeah, we have done that before. It's just in a challenging, uh, location. But, you know, if you, the, um, the responses that we included, uh, to the, uh, MND when we, when we received the responses, we did include, uh, some of those, uh, to the, to the neighbors that asked about drainage. And we let them know exactly what we were doing, uh, with some of those solutions. So, we did try to convey that. There, you know, I was able to meet with quite a few homeowners over the course of working through this project. There were also a few that didn't wanna meet. They, they wanted to come address this in public forum. They specifically told me they did not wanna talk to me outside of a, a, a public venue. And, you know, I respect that. I know we're in some unusual times right now. Um, but in terms of, uh, dealing with the, with the drainage, I mean, that's, we, the only other location we looked at was moving over here, which really doesn't, you know, is basically just changing that from here to here. But that really turned out not to be a viable, viable solution. And I just can't tell you how much we've beaten up the, the hydraulics. Hydrology has probably been one of the most complicated, uh, challenges with this site in terms of, of solutions. Um, as far as these, the owners on this side, I've met with almost everyone except for these people down here on the bottom. And the people on the north side there above the cul-de-sac, almost all of them want to keep their existing wall, which is probably between six and six and, six and a half feet, uh, in most cases. They don't want us touching their wall. So, the, the homeowner that was here, uh, tonight, I believe, lives in this home. Um, I have reached out to her a couple of times. Her wall can definitely be taller. She has a unique situation. Uh, if you've been out there, right now, there's actually a drainage channel that runs along just outside of her property. And it's actually, uh, it serves as a retaining condition as well. So, there's actually almost like a high curb, uh, with some retaining and then the wall, uh, on top of that. So, I've talked to, uh, the gentleman across the street and he said she's open to our solution. She just hasn't, for whatever reason, we've reached out, she just hasn't been able to connect with us. I was actually out on site a couple of weeks ago. Um, I was trying to meet with her after I, I met with the gentleman across the street and she had to pull off and said she had an appointment. And, uh, we've, again, I've, I've got a bunch of emails to her. We're doing everything we can. And I think we're gonna come up with a good solution for her at this location by increasing the height of that wall in addition to what we've done with the windows. So, I really do think we'll be able to solve her, uh, specific circumstance. But that was the one who, who was, who was speaking tonight. And I think she was on the phone, if I'm not mistaken. Um, yeah, we, we have reached out to her multiple times and I think we have a good solution. It's just a matter of being able to show her that and let her know that, hey, we think we can make a better solution. We're not trying to create a problem here or compromise anything you have working. We think we have an opportunity to make things better. And as I said, I, I asked her neighbor to, you know, put that, uh, in front of her too. And, you know, she did tell him, uh, yeah, I know he's emailed me. I haven't reached, I haven't reached out to him. I think she wanted to get all of her facts together. Uh, but hopefully, uh, I think we can do something there. Like I said, we're gonna be increasing the height of the wall around the cul-de-sac. So, we can continue that taller wall across that northern area there and I think come up with a pretty good solution.
I'd like to see that. See if you can listen to some of the neighbors tonight and work with them to see if you can, um, you know, if there's certain thing, whether it's, uh, simple explanations or regarding walls, that's something that, you know, um, you can talk to them about. Another concern that they have is regarding private, uh, not so much a private space, but open space. Um, I know this particular development, I'm not sure because some area, it doesn't seem like it has a private space. It, it, it seems like. Um, and then the open space, um, the park, 150-something people in the residential area is, is a bit small. Is there any way that you can incorporate some type of private space or open space? I mean, I know you tried with the balcony. Um, um, but some do not have even that. I mean, there's a smokers, they'll go out there and, I don't know, but I don't smoke. But, um, that's something that, you know, um, if you can address some of the, the house, because it's pretty packed and if they don't have a place to go, um, at least address some of the private, and how much private space are you giving each unit?
It varies. I mean, as, as, um, was pointed out in the earlier presentation, I mean, some of them are, are down to, you know, 150, 200 feet. Some of them are over 1,000. You look at some of these, um, end units, they have, you know, quite a bit of, uh, private space in them. Others, they have, you know, very, uh, small area between the units or, you know, porches and courtyards of that nature. So, there's a pretty wide variety of private space depending on, uh, your unit within the, within the community. So, the end units obviously benefit. As, as they do with all projects like this, um, you know, I lived in a, in a end unit for, for many, many years. And I had actually a nice little yard being on the, the end unit compared to my neighbors.
Hmm.
But yeah, I mean, this is, this is a, a lifestyle choice. People that, that buy in these communities aren't looking for a yard that they're gonna maintain. They don't want that obligation. This, this project is, you know, 90% maintained by the, the homeowner association. They have their park there where they can, you know, walk and take their dog, get a little bit of exercise. But the, the people that are here, they're, they, you know, work a lot of hours, you know, they're looking for a close location, uh, to their office. And it's, it's really a lifestyle choice. They're not, they're not looking for that, uh, big private yard. I know that's foreign to a lot of us. I know it's foreign to a lot of the neighbors who, you know, have, uh, more expansive yards. I, I certainly understand that. It's just a, a changing dynamic with the, with the buyers today.
Um, it's getting, uh, I think we need to either, um, vote to continue, um, our meetings to...
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um... Okay, uh, my message, I mean, my question could be for you or city staff. Uh, does this project meet the, the regional housing needs assessment, uh, that's mandated by state law? This housing project, does it meet the state mandate that as a city, we are obligated under law to create more housing projects? Does that, will this project meet that standard?
So, yes, um, this project will contribute to, um, I believe the city of West Covina was assigned, um, over, uh, 5,300 housing units that were supposed to supply between 2001 and 2020, or, sorry, 2021 and 2029. Um, and so, this will be 158 units that will contribute to that amount.
Great, thank you. I, I would like to make a, a motion, um, based upon the developer's commitment to the community in investing the amount of resources that he, that Mr. Lewis has committed to our community and, and has shown through your, through your public speaking today and, and the commitments you made today. And, and so, yeah, I would like to make a motion, uh, as a conditional approval, um, with Commissioner Lewis's recommendation about the wall, where, uh, the commercial area, zoning area over there, uh, to, uh, did you say increase it by seven feet? Is it seven feet?
Seven feet. Um, yeah, that, go, go, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, to increase it to seven feet in the commercial zoning area, um, and also commit to the, the, the den air, the den, the dead, the cul-de-sac area on Eileen Street, uh, to commit to the greenery, adding, adding the, the greenery there, um, I think, uh, uh, the corpris, caucasus trees, the branch, the bushes for, back there to match that area. Uh, and also, uh, commit to putting some, uh, hedge bushes in the parking area, which will help eliminate, uh, the public's view from vehicles who are parked there. Then I make a motion that we approve this project with those, uh, conditional approval or the conditions that I, uh, stated.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lewis, you had a question?
So, I, I actually, my understanding is we have to make a, a motion or basically, basically adjourned by, by 11:00. And I, I have a few more questions, uh, for the applicant. And so, um, I, I'm, there, there are, there are aspects of, of Commissioner Gutierrez's motion that, that I, that I agree with. There are certainly some, uh, some questions that, that I have and I, I feel like, uh, I would be, uh, shortchanging all of the input that all of the residents gave us tonight, uh, if I, if I shortcutted the conversation here. Um, so, I, I, while, while I'm, I'm not...
Would you like to make a motion to continue?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to continue at this juncture. Um, that will hopefully give the applicant additional time to reach out to residents, have, have additional discussion, um, which, which I, I, I think is probably in the best interest of this project. Um, however, I do, I do have some other, some other questions, uh, that I, that I definitely wanna get to. And quite frankly, because we've gone over the, a lot of time for staff, um, I would just make a motion to continue this, uh, to, to the, uh, next, uh, closest hearing. I, hopefully, we can do it at the, uh, the next March hearing if we have availability, uh, so that we can finish up the discussion and, uh, and, and ideally, uh, address, uh, as many of the residents' concerns as possible, um, and, and hopefully, uh, hopefully move forward amicably.
Okay, so we have two motions. We have one motion by Commissioner Gutierrez to approve this project with some of the items. And the second motion is by Commissioner Lewis to continue this project to a date that we will be picking later on tonight. So, um, we're going with Gutierrez first. Do I have a second motion? If, um, do I have a second motion? If I don't have a second motion, we're gonna, um, um, we're gonna vote, I'm, I'm sorry. Do I have a second motion and Commissioner Lewis, um, uh, motions to continue this to a...
I'll second it.
You second that. So, I have a second. So, roll call, please. Paulina?
Um, Commissioner Williams.
Um, wait, um, to continue.
To continue.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Lewis, do you mind, uh, that we continue this to the next upcoming meeting?
I, if, if that's an amendment to my motion, I, I agree to that amendment.
Okay, great.
I think we have to work with Paulina to see what the schedule is like. So, I think she decide, um, so when, whether the schedule will meet or not.
I believe we can, I believe we can accommodate that. Let me do it.
Thank you.
So, the next meeting is March 23rd.
March 23rd, okay.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
I'll second that and then we can do all.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll start again. Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Chair Becerra. Chair Hang.
Aye. Thank you. Motion is continued to the next meeting. And Paulina, could you please let us know what, what date it is?
Uh, that'll be, uh, March 23rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a couple more agenda items.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And, um, Paulina, you will... Paulina, can you put on record which date we're gonna have a continue?
I'm sorry?
The meeting. Can you let us know when we can continue to?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, March 23rd. We'll continue the, uh, project.
Alright, thank you. Now, we're, uh, moving on to non-hearing items. Do we have any non-hearing items? Um, Commissioner reports, comments, and miscellaneous items?
Um, no, none, no, none hearing items.
Okay, um, Commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items? Would any of the commissioners want, likes to make a report or a comment? Seeing none, will Community Development Directors report? Paulina, will you, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, there are, sorry, uh, no forthcoming cases scheduled, oh, sorry, there will be, uh, the continued item for the March 23rd, 2021 meeting.
Thank you. And then, City Council actions?
Um, the approval of the conditional use permit 20-17, slight modification 20-1, and the Subcommittee for Design Review 20-30 on Hollin Crest Drive has been appealed and is tentatively scheduled for hearing by the City Council in April.
I'm sorry, what they address again? Can you give it to me again?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The approval of the conditional use permit 20-17, slight modification 20-1, and Subcommittee for Design Review 20-30 on Hollin Crest Drive has been appealed and is tentatively scheduled for the City Council in April.
Thank you. Okay, since there's no, um, since there is no further business considered, this meeting is adjourned at this time, which is 11:11. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.